Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, February 26, 2024. Thank you for everybody who is here in the council chambers with us this evening, and thank you to everyone watching at home online. We will start our meeting as we do. If you are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, before we dive into our agenda this evening, I just want to start tonight by acknowledging the heartbreaking events and the devastating loss just to our south with our neighbors in Burnsville. Let you know that on behalf of the City of Bloomington, I've been in contact with Mayor Elizabeth Kouts in Burnsville and have expressed the full condolences of the City of Bloomington and the full support of the City of Bloomington for not only the city but the residents of Burnsville as well. And we obviously mourn the devastating loss of Officers Paul Elmstrand and Matthew Rugi and paramedic Adam Finseth. They were heroes, plain and simple, killed protecting the lives of children, and we mourn them. As they are across Minnesota, flags here in Bloomington are at half staff, and our hearts go out to Burnsville for everything. And I do want to say, as you might expect, when the call came out for help from neighbors, Bloomington responded. Our police, our fire, our city staff went down and helped in a variety of ways and frankly continue to help, and I'm proud of them for doing that. I really am. And they did it without hesitation. They did it on a Sunday morning, and they were there, and that's something to be proud of. It showed more than anything, I think, that this— Minnesota is a small town just in general, but the public safety community in the state of Minnesota is a very small town. There are connections everywhere. Everybody knows each other. They work together frequently, and frankly, they take care of each other. And I'm proud of our police, and I'm proud of our fire, and I'm proud of our city staff for the professionalism that they showed and the work that they did, but also proud of the empathy that they showed and the concern for their colleagues and that they have showed and that they continue to show. I sent an email to our police officers and our firefighters, assured them that all of Bloomington stood with them in this difficult time, and thanked them for their bravery and the dedication that they demonstrate every single day in often very difficult circumstances. And I mean, their strength and their resilience does not go unnoticed, and I hope I speak on behalf of all in Bloomington in thanking them and congratulating them for all that they've done over the past eight days and frankly that they continue to do every day in Bloomington, and very proud of them. And finally, I want to make sure that we don't forget the children and the family of those involved in the domestic abuse situation that was occurring that prompted the police call in the first place. We need to find a way to make this place, this world, safer for everyone, and we cannot forget them, and we cannot forget the trauma that they've gone through as well. Everybody here and everybody watching and all of my council colleagues and everybody else, if you see an officer, if you see somebody in blue or somebody from our fire department, thank them for the work that they're doing, and as I said, that they continue to do. They've been working south of the river now for more than a week and will continue to help out where they need to, and I'm proud to extend that to the City of Burnsville, and will continue to keep them in our thoughts and prayers. So just wanted to do that very quickly because I think it's an important thing to acknowledge in this being our first time together since that time. I wanted to make sure that we did that. Our first order of business tonight, official business, council is to approve tonight's agenda. We have, under introductory items, we have one proclamation, I Love to Read Month here in Bloomington. We are going to get an update regarding the Hennepin County Library progress, a project that's underway. We're going to hear the annual report and the 2024 work plan from our Human Rights Commission. They are here this evening, and then we're going to get an update on our Public Relations Strategic Plan and Digital Communications Work Plan. Our consent business has 12 items. Councilmember Carter has tonight's consent agenda. Thank you, Councilmember Carter, for taking that on. Under hearings and resolutions, we have two public hearings this evening. The first item, 4.1, is regarding the conveyance of Highland Greens Golf Course to Three Rivers Park District with conditions. The second is a public hearing on city code amendments and our sign ordinance update, which we've been talking about seemingly, I think, forever now. And then finally, under organizational business, we'll get an update on our Bloomington Forward projects, and we'll wrap up the meeting as we always do with our city council policy and issue updates. So, counsel, unless there are any changes, additions, or corrections to tonight's agenda, I will move tonight's agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity to point out that Councilmember Nelson is not with us. He's on the screen sideways, which is interesting right now, but that's better. Thank you, Councilmember— Nope, nope. There you got it. Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. So we're going to have to do all of our votes tonight via roll call, so I will say we've got a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. Ms. Mercer.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Aye.
Councilmember Loman?
Aye.
Councilmember Muah?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas?
Aye.
And Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. We have an agenda for this evening. Thank you much. Our first item tonight is a proclamation, and I'm going to head down to the desk. Wait, that's supposed to stay there. That's right. Sorry, wasn't supposed to move that one. Tonight's proclamation is "I Love to Read Month," which is March 2024, and I know we have a couple of folks from Bloomington Public Schools here. There they are. Come on up and join me if you could, please. We've got Mary Klemke and Emily Lambright. They are Bloomington School's media specialists. Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here. I'm going to read the proclamation. We'll present it to you, and if you have anything to say, jump right in, okay? All right, here we go. Proclamation for "I Love to Read Month," which is March 2024. Whereas the City of Bloomington recognizes the value of literacy to our community, and whereas the ability to read, write, and communicate is empowering, and whereas communication provides a basis for who we are and how we live together and interact with the world, and whereas reading is associated with early childhood learning and development, helping children to learn sounds, words, and language, expand literacy skills, and developing the ability to focus, concentrate, socialize, and communicate. And whereas the residents of Bloomington stand firmly committed to promoting reading as a catalyst for academic success, preparation for America's jobs of the future, and an ability to compete in the global economy, all which stand to strengthen our community. And whereas our community celebrates the joy of reading and embraces the importance of access to diverse books fostering a love for learning despite challenges. And whereas the residents of Bloomington recognize and embrace the National Reading Month theme of "Create and Celebrate a Nation of Diverse Readers." And now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim March 2024 to be "I Love to Read Month" in Bloomington and commend its thoughtful observance to all residents here in the City of Bloomington dated this 26th day of February 2024. Very happy to have you here this evening, and as we read this, as we issue this proclamation, as we talk about this, I want everybody in the audience to think about the last book you read. What was the last book that you read? Counsel, what was the last book that you read? Think about that, because it's something that I think in our busy lives, our busy world sometimes gets pushed to the side. And I remember a saying once that I had on a coffee mug, "The person who won't read has no benefit over the person who can't read." And so we've got to read, and glad you're here to bring some awareness to this.
Appreciate that.
Like to speak to this, or?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Bussie, and the City of Bloomington for this wonderful proclamation declaring March as "I Love to Read Month." As the public school media directors, we are honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the schools and community. We are committed to fostering a love for reading and providing access to diverse books for all our students. Together, let's celebrate the joy of reading and empower our community through literacy. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I'm going to hand you the proclamation. Yes, ask your friend. Thanks. Oh, we're going to get a picture? We've got to get the grip again.
Powerful camera.
Okay, sounds good.
One, two, three, read. One more. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here tonight. So, counsel, now that I've got you thinking about the last book that you read, we're going to move on to item 2.2, which is a nice segue into item 2.2, which is an update on our Hennepin County Library project that is underway. I know that we have here— Hold on, I have your name. I promise I do.
I wish you the best of luck pronouncing it.
You're Liz?
I am.
Liz Verduco?
Verderco.
Verderco, thank you. I apologize for that. Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmember. I was just going to say, what a great segue into what I'm here to present today. My name is Elizabeth Verderco. As mentioned, I'm the project manager for Southdale Library, and I am also the library team lead in our design and construction division and our facilities services department. I'm also here with District 5 Commissioner Debbie Guttell as well.
Thank you for being here. Could I ask you to get a little closer to the microphone or pull it a little bit closer to you to make sure that we— everybody can hear?
How is that?
That's perfect.
Great. Well, I wanted to also share, in terms of me being here alone, I represent a huge team. I have never been on a bigger team than the Southdale Regional Library Project. It consists of many, many subject matter experts, as you can imagine, as well as a few different agencies as well, so I just want to recognize that as well. With that said, one of the agencies or partnerships that we're partnering with is our tenant, which is the Edina Arts Center. Their facility is just off across roads, and they are also in a facility that is coming of age, just like our Southdale Regional Library. So our agency saw an alignment, and we wanted to seize on that synergy, programs, partnership, and that emphasis of learning and exploring. We're at our original site, which, as you can see, is on York Avenue. It borders the edge of Edina and Richfield. It is also just under eight acres. Before I get into the schedule, I'm going to take a little bit of a reflection backwards. This project has a long history. It's been on our drawing boards for over 10 years, so it has a lot of history. It's been on our original site, went off of our site, and now is back on our site. So we're eager to celebrate a new milestone that we've never actually been on. We're just completing schematic design phase right now. We have about a year ahead of us in design. As you can see, we are going to head into construction early part of 2025 for a 22 to about 24-month construction timeline. It is without being said that this is a critical regional library in our system, high notes in terms of usage, second highest in terms of information counts, that's an increase. Also, the sixth highest in physical checkouts. So its outreach in terms of proximities to various different communities expands past Edina and Richfield. Another thing that has been embedded since the beginning of our designs, early in, is community engagement and then also staff input. So in the design that we're continuing to move forward, when we can still see some of this, such as natural light, access, accessibility, as well as just overall welcoming, adding that Edina Arts Center also embraces a lot of those priorities as well. So kind of feeding off of that connectivity aspect and the community importance is another partnership. It's Three River Park District and the Nine Mile Trailhead. This piece is a missing link in the whole system. It is obviously a amenity for our metro, South Metro here, and very eager to see that through in terms of how it develops our site. And moving on to the site plan, you can start to see that really emphasized, also helped us in terms of our formatting of our site layout. So here you can see, from the southeast corner all the way to the northwest corner, there's a multimodal trail and path that splits up the south and the north side. We pushed our building to the north, both in terms of some of our design strategies for sustainability, but then also pronounced that northwest corner, which is our transit hub. So it's going to be another monumental plaza aspect and reflects off of York. Some other areas to be conscious of is right now, there's a lot of barriers on our site, so we're reducing those, allowing 360 access, so at every point, you can be able to access the site. Some other initiatives in the site that you'll see here is the stormwater management, reducing the hardscape significantly on our site, as well as several different formal and informal plazas, so children's area, the art plaza, and some reading plazas. I'm not going to go into great detail, but what I will say is there's several, several passive and active sustainable design strategies, and you can see some of them listed here in the next slide. We are aligning with B3, and then—which is equivalent to a LEED Platinum facility. Includes PV, stormwater management, green roofs. I can go on and on. And I'm just going to showcase some renditions here. So this is looking towards the southwest at that transit hub. This is looking to the west from Richfield and Xerxes. And this is looking to the northwest, that multimodal path. And then looking north from that south side, so this is that restorative landscape that is hefty on the stormwater management on the site. Next, I'm going to share a little preview of the Penn Lake Library refurbishment. This is very early in design. We're heading into understanding the infrastructure upgrades that are required for this facility. It's about 14,000 square feet, built in the 1970s, so it has a lot of upgrade needs. And then also, we have the Hennepin County Strategic Plan that's being overlaid. That includes some new study rooms, virtual conferencing and connectivity, improvements in sightlines, as well as upgrades to the teen and children's area. On top of that is some of our asset protection strategies, and then this will also be a B3-influenced project. As I mentioned, we're just heading into design, so then that puts us about construction estimated in the beginning of 2025. And that's what I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as Debbie Guttell.
Thank you, Ms. Verderco, and I did want to acknowledge Commissioner Guttell is with us as well. Good evening, Commissioner. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. Before I ask the council questions, I do want to say I'm a big fan of a, you know, a traditional library with pillars and the ornate bookshelves and the tables and so on, but to see a library today designed with multimodal transportation in mind, with vegetation, with stormwater management, it's just—it's a new way to think about a public amenity like a library, and I think it's a new and exciting way, and it's absolutely appropriate. So thank you for the thought that has gone into it. It's clear that it's not just a matter of cleaning it up and updating it, but rethinking exactly what a library can be, and I appreciate that. We see that here in Bloomington over at Oxborough, which is magnificent. Thank you very much for that, and I look forward to the opening of the Southdale Library. Counsel, questions, comments? Councilmember DeLisandro, and then Councilmember Loman. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you talk a little bit about the—how the Edina Arts Center fits into what we saw? Like where it'll be located? Will it be incorporated throughout as its own section? Anything like that you can share with us?
Sure, of course. So currently in design, we have it as on the second floor, so there will be some shared spaces, both in terms of the entry and some of the more common spaces that will have that transition between the two services and programs, because we really do want to blur that line a little bit. But in terms of allowing hours and some more of the operations, we do have to have a little bit more divisions, thus they are on the second floor of our facility currently.
Councilmember Loman.
More just a comment, you know, I just—it's wonderful to see this 10 years kind of upgrading, and those facilities made in the 70s need an upgrade, so—I was born in the 70s, so I guess I need an upgrade. But I just think it's just wonderful to see that this is coming of time here. I remember years ago, when I was looking for a job, I spent my time over there at Southdale, getting shushed by the librarians and that type of thing, and so I'm just glad to see that a new generation of South Metro and Hennepin folks will be able to have that same opportunity in a different way in a new place.
Thank you, Councilmember. Counsel, anything additional? Commissioner Guttell, anything to add?
Well, just quickly, this is way too meek and mild to talk about how great the climate change piece that we're doing on this is. There's geothermal in this building. The envelope is quite unique, and we're hoping to get as close to zero net energy as we can. We're in design phase, so we can't say for sure whether we can make that, but that is —the plan is to go as close as we can to that. And as we rebuild all of our buildings, we're looking at those kinds of aspects, and certainly when we're looking at upgrading the Penn Lake, we'll be looking at the envelope for those very reasons, too, for energy savings as much as we can.
Very good. All the more reason to be excited about this project. Well done. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, good. Well, thank you very much. Looking forward to the progress as you move forward on this. Thanks for being here this evening. Next on our agenda, counsel, is item 2.3. It is a report to the 2023 Annual Report and the 2024 Work Plan for our City of Bloomington Human Rights Commission. We have the Chair of the Human Rights Commission, Anita Smithson, here. Good evening, Madam Chair, and welcome.
Thank you. Do I get to drive today? Are you doing— great. Thank you. Make sure I know what I'm doing. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, City Manager and staff, for the opportunity to be with you here tonight. I'm here to talk about the work that the Human Rights Commission has accomplished this past year and to seek your approval for our 2024 work plan. First, I want to recognize the members of the Human Rights Commission for 2023 and our current members as we start 2024, and we know that you made three appointments earlier this month, and we're really looking forward to getting to know the new members of our commission once their terms start at our next meeting. All right, so I'm first going to start briefly covering some highlights from 2023. Our 2023 work plan was structured with four major categories, starting with annual initiatives. This includes activities that the Human Rights Commission has addressed over the years. Next are our work group initiatives, which you approved on our work plan in early 2023. The third category is partnerships in both the community and within the city, and the last is opportunities. This category is a list of ideas that we had wanted to memorialize in 2023 because they came up through our facilitated work plan conversations or during regular meetings as areas that we could potentially take on in the future, and included additional opportunities for growth and connection across the city and community. First, I will highlight one of our annual initiatives that's taken on by the commission, which are proclamations. We recommended eight proclamations in 2023 and have appreciated the opportunities we've had to enhance the proclamations with input from community members, city employees, and employee resource network groups. It has been really wonderful. I think we all could agree, it's fun to see community members come up and accept proclamations as well as city staff, and we think that these make our proclamations better, they make the community have a stronger bond with each other and, you know, throughout to bring us all together in this process. All right. Another initiative that we take on annually that we're very proud of is the Omar Bond Road Human Rights Award. As you see, this slide is just a recap of the award presentation, which was in December, so not too long ago. Jessica Martinez was recognized in 2023, receiving the award for her work advancing human rights in Bloomington and beyond. The Human Rights Commission works closely with city staff to put out a call for nominations to review and then name a recipient, as well as put on a reception before the council presentation. So thank you all and thank city staff for all of their support to host this event every year and do this work. This annual tradition dates back to 1974. All right, next, I will highlight two of our work group initiatives from 2023. The first is housing. Our commission spent time in 2023 intentionally learning about housing, how we can support existing city efforts to develop more equitable housing code, and how we could help raise awareness and support in the community for housing policies that meet the needs found in our community. We're glad to have representation on the Bloomington Housing Action Team and look forward to continuing to engage in and support this work. We have also continued to raise awareness about the Just deeds coalition, of which Bloomington is a member city, and will be continuing this work as well into 2024. The second work group that I will highlight is our LGBTQIA+ work group. We hosted an event in the spring, which invited LGBTQIA+ youth and their families to Civic Plaza for a casual conversation about their lived experiences and ways that the commission and the city could support this community within our Bloomington community. We also attended Bloomington Pride with other city boards and commissions and appreciated the opportunity to connect with residents and share resources that we have and that the city has—about what the city can offer and what the Human Rights Commission does. And the last category from 2023 that I'll highlight is partnerships. Commissioners have expressed a strong desire over the past few years to feel connected and to be contributing towards the City of Bloomington's mission and strategic plan. Through partnerships in the community and in the city, we've been able to deepen our involvement and our connections. Notable partnerships include Bloomington Pride, the Board and Commission Connect Events and Newsletters, and Representation on the Welcome to Bloomington Planning Team. So that concludes our look back at 2023. And so looking ahead for 2024, we have two major categories that are documented in our work plan, which are annual initiatives and work group initiatives. On this slide, you will see the nine proclamations that we plan to recommend in 2024. The newest one was presented earlier this evening and accepted by one of the librarians that serves my children, so that's great to see. Initial—excuse me. Additional annual initiatives are continued on this slide, which include the Omar Bond Road Award and additional collaborative initiatives such as the Board and Commission Connect. I also wanted to share a little bit about the HRC correspondence. As we do occasionally receive communications from members of the community, we have made a really intentional effort to document these on our agenda every month with any actions that are taken or follow-ups that are requested by the commission. This process has evolved over my time on the commission, and we feel this current process really helps us be transparent as a commission regarding the communications that we receive, but also honoring the sensitive nature of some of the communications that come in when community members might be looking for help with alleged discrimination. Our work group initiatives for 2024 are sorted into five major categories: housing, youth partnerships, and advocacy; proclamations; the municipal equality index; and the Welcoming City Initiative. The first work group initiative is housing. This includes the upcoming Just Deeds and Beyond event. This is out on the city's website, as well as a flyer that you all should have received tonight. We're having it on March 13th, right here in council chambers, and the community is welcome and invited to attend, so check out the City of Bloomington's website, Just Deeds page for that. We are also doing continued work on a housing as a human right resolution and exploring additional housing advocacy and partnership. additional housing advocacy and partnership opportunities in support of the leadership of the HRA. Under the youth work group, we are continuing to seek input and learn ways to support the young people in our community, including our LGBTQIA+ youth, as well as exploring opportunities to support youth transportation safety through the Public Works leadership on the Active Transportation Plan. We know you all are doing a lot of great work on our parks and we want to make sure that our kids can get there safely. Two additional work group initiatives for 2024 include proclamations, as we continue to deepen the proclamation tradition and its connection to the community, and the municipal equality index that always tends to get a bit of buzz when it comes out. Our intention for 2024 with regards to the MEI is to assess the 2023 score and explore opportunities, if there are any, that would improve the lives of both city staff and community members, leaving room for recommendations if they're needed. Our score for 2023 was an 85, which is a one-point increase from the prior year, anticipating that that may be a question. The last work group initiative is the Certified Welcoming Effort that the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion and Belonging has invited us to partner with them on. So we will support the assessment and advancement of this initiative and look forward to the opportunity to get started and involved more in this work this upcoming spring. That includes my formal presentation, so I'd take any questions if you have them, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Chair, for coming this evening and for your work on the, on the commission. I should mention also, we, by our city charter, requires us each year to review the annual work, the annual report and the work plan of all of our boards and commissions. And so I think number three or four in the list. I'm not even sure where we are on the list right now, but we'll be going through these over the course of the next few weeks and making sure that everybody steps forward. All our boards and commissions step forward with their annual report from last year and a work plan for next year, and it's approved then by the city council. Council, questions? Councilmember Carter.
Excuse me, thank you. I've been losing my voice today a little bit, so pardon me. So I have a quick question and then I have a suggestion, but it might be more for the city manager. So my question is, so you said we scored an 85 on our MEI last year. And so I'm curious where we were kind of, I guess, maybe docked 15 points? And are there things that the Human Rights Commission is doing in 2024 to help close that gap?
Yeah, we could do a more thorough review of the items. Essentially where Bloomington is falling short of that 100, 100-point score, which is the maximum, is mostly in areas, just speaking really high level, of the city as an employer. There are quite a few areas that we earn state credit on, but we don't earn credit as a municipality because we aren't creating duplicative ordinances in the city level, but we get points on a smaller scale from having it as a state policy. So what I can say, so a couple of points. The Organization of the Human Rights Campaign, which is a private organization that does this index, they had some changes in their staff, and so we didn't have an opportunity as a city last year to provide input. They have the basic scorecard that they develop, and they look for public information about municipalities to base the score. And we have had an opportunity as a city in the past. Through the co-ed team has provided input to help fully inform our score. We didn't have that opportunity last year. We received one less point in one area, which was, again, pro-equality legislation. We earned credit for the state, but we didn't get credit for the city having an ordinance. But we gained two points in another area. And then there are just some other areas, like we rank very high in our law enforcement policies. We get the maximum points available. That's for, like our law enforcement reporting hate crimes that might be based on gender, sexual identity, things of that sort. And in the area of like nondiscrimination laws, we receive credit for state laws, but we could earn additional points if we had more local laws regarding employment, housing and public accommodations. So area for growth there. It's certainly something that we want to look at. That's why it's one of our initiatives. And in some areas, it may make sense for the city to consider some things. For us, it's really important that if there are changes that are made, they're not just to increase a score necessarily, but to actually make impact that improves the lives of, you know, people who live in Bloomington or people who work for the city. So, yeah, we can definitely come back with more.
Thank you. That's super helpful. And good to know that it's not just like simple, like a simple scoring process, right?
Can I have Mr. Verbrugge chime in here?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, one of the things I'm hoping will help us is that our newest employee resource group that just formed, the PRISM Group, is focused on supporting LGBTQ in our organization. And I know they have MEI on, I believe, their next meeting agenda. Tracy Smith from CoEd is going to be presenting the index and talking to them about ways that we can potentially move the needle even more. This, this is one index where, you know, as an organization, I think we do have a fair amount to be proud about because when we did this for the first time, I think in 2017 or 2018, I think our original score was 29 or 34, right? So we've, we've moved significantly in the years since we have been participating in it. And I think the PRISM Group and the HRC is definitely interested in seeing if we can continue to make movement.
Thank you for that additional explanation and for providing the historical perspective too. So my second question, a couple of council meetings ago, we talked a little bit about wanting to explore a wage theft and labor trafficking policy or something along those lines. And so I guess to me, that seems to be fundamentally a human rights issue. And I, so I'm curious what the role of the Human Rights Commission would be as, because we are moving that work forward, is my understanding. And so, and maybe you don't have the answer now, but I guess I would just put it out there for consideration as we move forward.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, we'll have the folks who are pursuing both of those take a look at that and touch base with Mr. Holtz and see if we can figure out an avenue or if it's appropriate to have the HRC weigh in as well.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have to ask my yearly question. Another council member asked, so that's great. So you had mentioned during the presentation, just have two quick things for you, the HRC correspondence piece. Can you talk a little bit more about that in terms of what that means and what that, what's that's looked like over time and how that's evolved?
Yeah, in the last few years, I think you all would agree that there's been an increased demand, rightfully so, from the community to have transparency in government. And so we have received emails from community members who, you know, may have a suggestion on something that we might, they think that we might want to work on. And also, as people become aware of the Human Rights Commission, you know, we've tabled at farmers markets and we've been at resource fairs here within Civic Plaza, people have come to find us as a resource. So we have received emails, you know, of people alleging discrimination in their housing, in their employers, in their workplaces. And so those used to come to just an inbox that city staff would receive, and we would get an update, but it wasn't really formally documented. And so in the sake of transparency, we wanted to share that with the entire commission instead of just the Chair and Vice Chair, but also do it in a way that, you know, does, you know, not, not forwarding the email to every member, but our staff puts together a summary of the email that was sent. It is available for members to view, of course, but then we track it on a rolling three-month basis. So if there are any questions that commissioners have, you know, say, was this person advised of their rights? Were they told where they could file a formal complaint if they do feel that discrimination has happened, often like with the State Department of Human Rights? Then we just track as a commission those follow-ups to make sure that that's being done and that we aren't dropping the ball on something that a community member has come to us from. The Human Rights Commission inbox certainly never was a place where, you know, things, you didn't really know what happened to them, but we wanted to be really intentional and really transparent with the community. So if you look at our agenda, one of the last items that we cover at every meeting is talking about any of that correspondence that is in that three-month rolling period and then tracking any follow-up, so.
Well, thank you for that, and I appreciate giving a little more background on that. Did you have some more on that or?
If you mind, I'll just share that in recent time, you would perhaps be familiar with the updated Fair Housing Policy correspondence that formerly entirely went to the Human Rights Commission. Anything about housing discrimination now goes to OREB, Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion and Belonging. So there now, just to be clear, we formerly did all the HRC correspondence, and now anything fair housing related does go to OREB, just to be clear about that. So just a small addition, so. Thanks, Mayor.
Well, it's almost as if you anticipated my next question, because that was very next, my very next question was around the sole idea of this partnership and how that's going to work. Human rights has traditionally been external-facing commission, but now with this partnership in terms of, with equity and inclusion, I'm just wondering if that is going to change some of, you know, like that one thing you just mentioned, that some of that correspondence, and that was the example of the change there. Are there other items? And maybe this is a question, maybe kind of jointly shot down at the city manager and then also, you know, the Chair, but I'm always very curious about that, you know, in terms of how we can leverage this commission to do some of those external and internal affairs.
Please.
Yeah, we, like I said, partnerships has been really important to us. We are not experts and we're volunteers, right? But we are happy to participate in any way that we can that helps support the city's mission, and we appreciate opportunities to collaborate. The last example that I gave from our work plan is the Welcoming Cities Initiative. That's something that is being led by the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion and Belonging, but they came to us and asked if that's something that we could work on together. And so I know that the, you know, initial process is going to be an assessment more of the city. That doesn't make sense for the Human Rights Commission members to be sitting right in the room for something like that. But once that assessment is done, we absolutely want to partner with them, with their lead and, and, you know, do what we can to help advance any initiatives that might come from that, and of course, any additional ones that may come up. The correspondence one is, of course, there are things that now go to other offices within the city that aren't just for the Human Rights Commission. And so I would say that we're not necessarily partnering with them so much as making sure that they have it for the correspondence issue at least, but Eric can speak to that. Sorry.
Eric Cole.
Informally his name, he can speak to that more specifically than I can.
Anything additional? Very good. If you would, please pass on to the current commission and your new commission members as they come on board. Our thanks for the work that you do. Keep up the good work. We, we appreciate it and thank you for making Bloomington a better place.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Thanks, Mayor and Council.
Council, with that, we need a motion, if I could, to approve the Human Rights Commission's 2024 work plan as presented.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the Human Rights Commission's 2024 work plan. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer. We're gonna need your microphone. There we go.
Mayor Bussi.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Mua. Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Very good. Thanks much. And again, extend our thank you to the rest of the commission. Next on our agenda is item 2.1, what are we on? 2.4. We've got an update on our public relations strategy and our digital communications work plan, something that the council and staff have been talking about for a while now, how to bump up our public relations and how to make Bloomington, the good, the great work that Bloomington does, to make it more out there and evident, to be less Minnesotan and kind of, you know, not put our heads down and say, oh, shucks, but to actually brag about the great work that we do here. So Janine Hill from our communication staff. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bussi and councilmembers. Tonight, I will provide you with an update on the public relations, communications and strategic plan that we developed with an outside consultant and presented to you last summer. Council, staff, businesses, the community and various interviews helped inform the plan with the goal to inform and engage the community and beyond. This plan aligns with the key priorities of the Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic plan and will be vital to support its mission to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. The Communications, Public Relations and Marketing Plan identified the following strategies: Build community identity to better brand the city and its many attributes to create a stronger personality and reputation for Bloomington; Increase media outreach by building relationships with the media to share stories regularly to garner attention that shines a light on Bloomington's strengths; Develop additional feedback tools to provide feedback engaged success; Develop proactive communications plans and key messages for projects and initiatives; Develop a proactive crisis communications response plan; Create business advocates and enhance outreach to the business community; Implement key recommendations from our social media audit to encourage civil discourse; Provide communications training for city leaders and staff; And enhance alignment between communications and community outreach and engagement divisions. We developed a work plan to develop some of these strategies last fall. More than half of these strategies are currently underway. Here are the highlights. We're purchasing a media tracking service to monitor the stories about Bloomington on traditional media and social media. This can help us create an effective public relations plan, allowing us to be proactive rather than reactive. We're enhancing alignment between communications and co-ed. We're meeting monthly together to better understand each other's work and how we might support each other better. And we've developed proactive communication and engagement plans together, specifically the three major projects for Bloomington Forward, which you will be hearing more about tonight, and improvements in Bryant and Trepp-Bob Parks. Improving flow of information and story ideas. Executive management team is identifying upcoming stories at meetings, at times specifically identifying city council agenda items that may be of interest to the media. City staff send more news items and reach out to communications on a regular basis. We created a video form for potential video projects, and I might say it's well-used. We're drafting project-specific communications and engagement plans using project management model, which identifies involving communications early on as a key component to the, to a successful project. We have seven total communications and engagement plans currently underway in just the last few months, in addition to the aforementioned projects. Hatch, which is a small business competition that you'll be hearing about in the next couple of weeks, and initial talks on an urban forestry plan and a five-year economic development plan that we'll be talking about tomorrow. We're creating alignment with Bloomington Tomorrow Together by tying the priorities and the plans to its messages. All of these plans include informing all of our key audiences and increasing news release distribution and continued focus on media response. These are the goals for our digital communications and other tools for reaching our audiences in Bloomington and beyond. Increase brand awareness. It means residents, businesses and other stakeholders will better understand the value of city services. Favor posts that enhance community image because positive stories encourage people to develop an appreciation of the city's inhabitants and its amenities. Encourage positive engagement and sentiment. People who have positive engagement with the city are more likely to contribute to the cultivation of the community's strengths and to feel a shared responsibility for its well-being. The online work underway includes a reviewed and revised social media policy and purpose statements to ensure we're adhering to the guidelines we've set. Sharing more partner organizations' content. People and organizations are doing really good things in our community, and we want to help spread the word. Alignment with Bloomington Tomorrow Together. Priorities that include a connected welcoming community, a healthy community, and a community with equitable economic growth. For all accounts, we try to post a mix of information and beauty images and the thing, the great things about Bloomington. Again, the types of things that people may want to celebrate about the community in which they live and work. So specifically, here is a snapshot, snapshot of Facebook, LinkedIn and Instagram. This, this slide shows the number of posts the city published per week from 2020 through 2023 on Facebook. You'll notice that in 2023, the number of weekly posts was fewer than the previous years. That was intentional. At the start of the year, we began following a strategy to reduce the number of posts per week as recommended by our audit. So the goal, fewer posts and more engaging content. This orange line shows the percentage of posts each year that reached more than This orange line shows the percentage of posts each year that reached more than three, post each year that reached more than 3,000 people. We've used this number as a benchmark for success as to whether a post got good reach. As the orange line indicates, even though our posts were fewer, our ability to reach people remained the same or improved slightly. It's worth noting that we turned off Facebook comments in April 2023. It was interesting that our performance metric that year ended up being higher than any other year since we began calculating this metric in 2018. So even with comments off, our posts performed as well or better than previous years. We are going to continue recommending keeping comments off, similar to how we've been using YouTube from the start. Posting focused content on Facebook, but one-way communications. As noted before, there are many ways that people can provide feedback to the city. Let's Talk Bloomington digital platform, our website forums, our social platforms and other traditional ways. Continue to address all platforms and look for ways and new ways to reach our audiences. And continue to use Facebook to inform and show Bloomington is a welcoming community and a remarkable place where people want to be. We've been using LinkedIn for years, but haven't used it as a social platform until January this year. Since LinkedIn has changed up its platform to be more engaging and allow people to comment, share and like stories, we began to take note. We have found LinkedIn to be a positive professional platform to share good news stories and celebrate the city's work. Since beginning, since the beginning of the year, we have published 22 posts that have received 25,546 total impressions, visible to over 16,000 individuals, and 835 clicks, which means a user clicked on or directly engaged with Bloomington's content. The city's LinkedIn account showcases economic initiatives, projects and the people and partnerships that contribute to the prosperity and well-being of the community. LinkedIn content also includes development and planning updates and city job opportunities. A platform for fun, lively, engaging images, Instagram took a backseat during the pandemic years, but late in 2022, we took the time to step back and evaluate our Instagram presence. With all of the data from our online audit, we drafted a purpose statement with content guidelines limiting the use of text images and using the platform to showcase Bloomington's beauty and enhance community image. We also started posting short-form videos or reels. Our new strategy has translated to a lot more engagement overall. In the first four weeks after developing an Instagram purpose statement, we reached almost 35% more accounts, had 130% more engagement with our content and gained 198 new followers. Reels and stories are tools Instagram has available to create short video stories. Here are a few examples that have been successful. The first is a first snowfall with the caption, "How's your snowy Tuesday going?" The second is Bob the Painter. Our staff was walking at Nine Mile Creek and captured the reel. We ended up doing a longer video on YouTube. Bob Matheson lives in Minneapolis, but said he's coming to Bloomington's Nine Mile, he's been coming to Bloomington's Nine Mile Creek for 20 years because it is one of the prettiest places that is easily accessible. I showed you those just to remind you that we do have snow in Minnesota. Our next steps are primarily focused on media relations. We're going to increase media outreach, specifically identify reporters, new and key contacts, reach out and build relationships with these reporters and pitch stories. Review and revise current, the current media list and identify specific news sources who want specific content. And use our media monitoring tool for analytics, reports, monitoring and stories. And continue to create communications and marketing plans for projects to inform audiences and media stories. So the recommendations for the next steps. In order to really keep this plan moving forward for the near term, we've got a lot in the plan and we need more resources. First, reclassify one or more positions to add media and public relations duties. Create an internship program to help with additional work. And issue an RFP for targeted public relations and consulting for a two-year period. The work would range from monthly check-ins to public relations and media outreach for special projects. We would look at the entire organization, some of the big projects that are coming online and use their assistance to get media visibility both locally and regionally where we don't have the resources. They would work closely with communications staff and project staff. We're looking forward to moving Bloomington forward in a positive direction and communications staff is excited about the work we've already done and we're eager to implement the steps, the steps that I've presented to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. That comprehensive and exciting and encouraging to see the work that has been done, the work planned and the overall plan in place to move it all forward. So thank you so very much for that. Council questions? Councilmember Rivas and then Councilmember Mua. Councilmember Rivas.
Yeah, I just, I'm just wondering why are we not allowing the public to make comments on any other media publications that the city makes?
Uh, we, well, Councilmember, or Mayor Bussi and Councilmember Rivas, we do allow, the only platform right now that we aren't, that does have comments available that we're not allowing is Facebook, but we, and all of our other social media platforms like LinkedIn and Nextdoor and Twitter and I'm missing one, Instagram if I said. And then also, we have a variety of other online tools, the Let's Talk Bloomington, which is an online platform, social media platform. We are allowing comments. Specifically, when you say media, do you mean something other than social media?
Uh, no, social media.
Okay.
Specifically. I mean, I have heard a lot of constituents in my area being, being in the subject, but they're not allowed to make any comments on the city pages. I, I try to stay away from social media as much as possible. I use it only for family matters or photos exchanged, nothing else. But I mean, everybody has make, a good deal of people have made comments to me that they're not allowed to make any comments on the city site. So I was just wondering why that's not allowed to happen.
Yes, Mayor Bussi.
Mr. Brugge, anyone?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, I was gonna ask Ms. Hill to maybe go back to the findings from our consultant and how it is that we use our various platforms and what it is that we're trying to accomplish, especially through Facebook and why we think that the, the commenting on is frankly contradictory to what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Bussi, Council and Councilmember Rivas. The, the history behind that in April was we were seeing a lot of negativity on Facebook and we felt that it was not in line with being a welcoming community of our new Bloomington Together Strategic Plan. So we disabled comments and we're monitoring that to see how it affected engagement and reach on that platform. The platform still gets likes and loves and other reactions and in addition to shares. And, but our consultant had outlined, that I put together at the beginning, I put a list because I, I realized that you had not been involved in the very beginning and I wanted to give a comprehensive review of what our strategies are. And that was actually one of our strategies to really look at our online communications and to make sure that we were in line with the overall goal and priority of being a welcoming community.
If I may, does that mean that we only allow positive comments on regards to any posting that the city has or, or is negative comments are also welcome as well? I mean, it helped me to understand. I, I'm kind of probably misinterpreting the whole thing. I'm thinking that we are allowing only positive comments to whatever the city is posting and nothing negative coming back. I, I believe that both comments are constructive in many ways, as long as not foul language is using any of the comments where they're negative. I mean, but what is the reasoning behind that though? Are we trying to avoid any negativity on regards to any other projects the city has, the posts?
Mayor Bussi and Councilmembers and Councilmember Rivas, we are, we don't have any comments allowed on Facebook. So what we're doing is we, but we do allow that and we have a lot of other ways on our other social media accounts. It's just Facebook only where we have disabled the contents, the, the comments, excuse me. And we're just using that platform for pushing out information and in guidance with our social media audit that we had at the end of the previous year to look at limiting the number of posts that we had and increasing engagement and with using more beauty images of Bloomington and to really engage with people on the specific platform, the way that people engage with their friends and family. And so they're posting things about food and so we'll, we'll share news about top five restaurants and maybe a couple of Bloomington restaurants made the list. And they'll share photos about all of the great things that maybe their family was, or their, or their children are doing. And so it's really engaging with the platform, the way the platform was meant to engage with. And so that is how we're getting more reach and engagement. And we're using other platforms for feedback, like for instance, Let's Talk Bloomington to get feedback on specific projects and other feedback from the community. We want to hear from the community and we, positive or negative comments. We're just using Facebook and some of the other platforms on social media and we're trying to use it in a way to be in line with our overall goal.
So it is a limited engagement, right? Just what the city wants to publish and perhaps just like, and that's all the comments you get, but not any specific statements in regards to whatever you post, right?
Mayor Bussi, Councilmembers, Councilmember Rivas, yes, it's just the comments. People can like it and react to it and share it and they can share it on other pages and comment on other pages. We just don't have the comments enabled on Facebook. And that's all platform, that's all Facebook accounts. We have Police, Farmer's Market, the main city account and Parks and Rec.
Thank you.
Mr. Brugge?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Rivas, I apologize that we probably should have had both of the documents to you before this item. So I'll make sure after this meeting that we get a copy of the public relations plan and the social media audit that we did, so you have a chance to see this in a little bit more detail too.
Thank you.
I see Councilmember Mua and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for that presentation. I've run marketing campaigns before and I know how much work it goes into figuring out your channels and how you're gonna use them and making sure that your people are being used as efficiently as possible because especially with social media, it's very labor intensive to be responding to every comment and not using them all in their specific way does weigh down. And so I think that's a great idea that we've been doing is making sure each channel has a specific purpose, which is why I do love the internship idea. I think that brings in a new perspective, the younger generation, new ideas of how we use social media, so I love that idea. But my question really lies in like benchmarking. So I know with a lot of private commercial marketing, we have benchmarking to figure out, are we meeting the, the right levels of communication based on our competitors and that kind of thing? Do we have industry benchmarking that we are working towards?
Mayor Bussi, Councilmembers, Councilmember Mua, as of right now, I don't know that we have the industry, industry as in economic development or?
Other cities.
Other cities.
Municipalities.
Oh, definitely other cities. We are, when we first undertook, I think we were one of the first cities actually to put together or hire Eric Hanson as a consultant for our social media audit because we had really seen a decline in our social media accounts and engagement in general over the last couple of years. And that's not specific to Bloomington and we found out because we had several focus groups with our peer cities like Edina and Richfield and Wayzetta and Eden Prairie and they all provided feedback, the same, very similar feedback to what, how we, what we were experiencing on social media. And so in succession, I know Edina and Richfield are now working with Eric Hanson as a consultant or have at least completed their plans. And they're seeing the same kinds of things of not, or direction as not posting as often, using the platform the way it was intended. We have a long list of the, of the ways that we can improve performance in communications. One of the ideas that, or part of the strategies was, you know, doing some surveys and just to see if, you know, if we're reaching our audiences, where they're getting that information. We have lots of anecdotal feedback on, on, you know, from people in the community and elsewhere. But we're in regular contact with our peers on all kinds of things and all kinds of issues and making sure that we are all in line with how the benchmark of other cities are.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, two things. One, I saw the information with regards to the beach. Is there any information with regards to engagement or interaction? I believe that Facebook in particular tracks that. And two parts to that. One, did we see a reduction in engagement or interaction because of the negative posts? And, and let's, I think, be clear that some of the negative posts were not simply that people disagreed with policy or decisions that the council made. They were just outright personally offensive comments, particularly directed at you, Mayor, and that was just disrespectful and inappropriate, but nothing much we could do about it because it was there. And then the second part of that is that it would, did we see a reduction in engagement after we changed the policy?
Mayor Bussi, Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, the first part of your question, if I understand it, was the reason behind the, the Facebook comments and that we weren't just turning off comments because of the specifically targeted negative comments. It was just overall comments in general. And, and we did not, we, we just wanted a, a uniform platform or a uniform approach to all of our, our Facebook accounts. And in fact, I think that the time that we made that decision, we were seeing lots of engagement from people outside of Bloomington, posting outside of Minnesota, in fact, posting on, on accounts. And it was the, the kinds of message, the, the kinds of messages left just were not really in line with, is what you said, with really what our goals are for that platform and really over, like overriding the, the good news that we were putting out. And so the platform was essentially useless at that point when all of the negativity and the comments were coming in, that the, either the good news, which using Facebook as a way to help us with public relations and, and marketing and communications, it wasn't helping us. It was that the platform was no longer of use to, to us. And then the second part of the question, did we see engagement go down? Is, is, was that your, with the comments?
Yeah.
Okay. I do have a slide if we want to just quick go back to the slide. Mic on that, let's see, the slide.
And Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, well, Janine's bringing that back up. I just want to clarify, Councilmember Nelson, was part of your question about whether we were able to track reach and engagement going down due to the prevalence of the negative comments or i- in addition to what we see with the reach increasing despite fewer posts, right? So I think, I think, Janine, part of the question is, in the social media audit, was, was Eric able to identify that the, the negative environment of Facebook, was that affecting engagement in a negative way?
He did, or Mayor, Mayor Bussi and Councilmembers and Councilmember Nelson, he did say that the kinds of posts that used, by using Facebook, the way that it was intended, as I mentioned, for posts that your friends and family would post on there, you're going to get more good engagement and that really is the purpose of the platform. And so we, he recommended that we reduce the number of posts, that we post beauty shots and showcase the community and all of the great things about the community and use the platform for the way it was intended. So does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. My second question, quick- My second question quickly is just about the recommendation on staffing level. If I recall correctly, previously we had talked about bringing in additional FTEs for this. And is this a shift from that recommendation? This is different, it seems like a shift that we're looking at a firm to do the PR type and an intern and maybe shifting internal staff. Am I correct in understanding that this is a new recommendation, different than what we had before?
Mayor Bussie, council members and council member Nelson. Yes, we met to, to, to talk about the budget overall. And we were budget conscientious when we were looking at all of the needs that we, all of the resources. And so we decided that the best way to achieve this is use the talents and the resources that we already have. We have several staff who have been reporters before they came here, both in print and media. They interview on a regular basis, both internally and external audiences. And so we want to use the talent that we have in-house and take a look at the job descriptions and, and titles. And then the intern was suggested to help with some of the extra work that we have to free up some of the time to do media focus and media relations focus and use an intern to supplement that, part-time intern. And then get the expertise on a, we'll do an RFP, we'll draft what the deliverables might be and what exactly we need and determine what costs and on a, you know, how, how often would we use a, a consultant, consulting firm? And use that to supplement what we're doing and to reach where we can't reach and to just provide training and ongoing support. And, and then that would be for that time period, that, that shorter time period of two years. And then see what happens after that.
Mr. Rugi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Nelson. Couple other factors, appreciate Janine's explanation there. We heard what the council said last time we talked about this and, and wondering if the consultant approach might be a better one. After talking through it, Janine identified some of the budget issues as councils where much of our communications division is funded through cable franchise fees. And I think most of you understand that the lay of the cable franchise world right now is uncertain. As a matter of fact, we're going into negotiations for our next franchise here very shortly. And so it's a little bit of an uncertain environment right now. So not adding, you know, permanent staff tied to some uncertain funding was one thing that we were cautious of doing. And the second is recognizing that as we're just getting started with the strategic plan, the, the consultant approach, the intern approach allows us to be a little bit more nimble and flexible to it, right? If we're seeing that some things are working or aren't working, that allows us to pivot and do that on a relatively quicker basis than if we were to take on the responsibility of full-time staff.
Anything else, council member Nelson? Very good. Council member Moa and then council member DeLisandro, council member Moa.
Thank you, Mayor. So, city manager, just want to confirm, so with the consultant approach, based on my just experience, this would be a project by project basis? It wouldn't be like we're trying to replace the department, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, council member Moa, absolutely not going to replace the department. This is essentially one additional person. And one of the things that we really talked through is, and I'm sure that many of you have worked with consultants in your professional capacity, it doesn't necessarily relieve existing staff of work, right? Because the consultant's going to do something and then that input still has to get done at the city level by existing staff, right? So trying to figure out to Janine's point, as we craft the RFP, what it is specifically we're going to be asking about. It may not be on a, on a project by project basis, maybe on a retainer basis. It may wrap in some other things, like maybe some crisis communication. It may involve more strategic outreach, right? Because a lot of the consultancies or, or PR firms that, that may be interested in this have relationships and places that we will find helpful in, in newsrooms and, you know, editorial boards and those types of things that will help us understand where is the best place to go as we continue to try to get the message out. So we're going to figure that out as we put the RFP together, how best to utilize that consultant and on what basis.
And ultimately, it's our decision to make the final approval for whatever work they're doing, right? We're not just handing the keys to, post whatever.
Absolutely.
Council member DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for being here today, appreciate it. Thanks for the update. So two things, one, I just want to confirm, I heard you say that Instagram, LinkedIn, Nextdoor and X slash Twitter, last whatever the heck they call themselves these days, all have comments available to them. In addition to that, Let's Talk Bloomington is completely open. Whenever we have projects, we solicit feedback. Actually, we do that quite actively there, if I understand correctly. And then if I understand, maybe all of us have public individual pages that we manage on our own that anybody can comment and, and all, plus we can, they can find us all via email, they can find us via phone calls, et cetera. I feel really uncomfortable with the idea that we have somehow stifled communication to the city council by turning off Facebook comments. It, it drives me crazy that I continue to hear that. And so Facebook is the, Facebook and YouTube are the only two places where we do not do public commenting. And that's true for every account that we have. Do I have all that right?
Mayor Bussie, council members, council member DeLisandro, yes, you do. And it is important to note that we'll continue to assess all of our accounts and all of our platforms and look at what new platforms are out there and what new ways that we can use to reach people. And, and you know, there, there may be platforms that we use to help, help us more with public relations and marketing that come up that then will back off on some other ones and maybe not use it as much. And we want to get that environmental scan and that snapshot of what's going on in Minnesota, in the country, of how people are using social media and how they're not using social media.
Right, great, thank you for that. And I, I'll just say, reiterate, you know, individually, that to me, Let's Talk Bloomington is, is the, the platform that we have chosen, it seems, for community engagement. And so my next, my next question would be, I'd like to know, I'd like to know, I had the opportunity to look at the coed, very quickly, the coed page, and I know you all work very closely together. So Let's Talk is a coed function, but you all are working side by side on that. When I look at the, the stats there, I feel like we don't have the kind of engagement maybe that we are hoping for. I'm wondering how you are assessing our, our engagement in Let's Talk Bloomington? What your benchmarks are and whether or not you have specific goals in mind for this communications plan that is increasing the engagement in that particular area?
Is Eric still here, Eric Holt House? Mayor Bussie and council members and council member DeLisandro, you are, you are correct that I am not working closely with that platform that Community Outreach and Engagement Division does manage that. We support that, but they manage that account. And they, as you are aware, are undergoing their own strategic plan right now. And so my guess is that at the end of that plan, which will be very soon, they will have those kinds of, those kinds of measurement and analytics and tools to like look at, how do we, you know, how are we achieving our goals on that platform? How can we get more people on this platform? And how do we work with communications in general to make sure that we are driving people to that platform and using it to the, to its best ability?
Right, a great example of exactly that. I'm thinking, you know, if you don't want people to comment on Facebook, because most of them are, are, you know, not relevant to the comment here, to the thing that it is anyway. Most of the time, the comments were about something not related to the post itself anyhow. It was just an attempt to make some comment. So the, the, it seems to me, the call to action on some of these media posts, these social posts, is to take them to Let's Talk Bloomington. And that's why I'm asking how we're planning to like work together on that. So it sounds like you guys are formulating that. I'd love to hear an update at some point, six months from now or whatever, that helps us understand that a little bit more.
Mr. Rugi. Mr. Mayor and council members, council member DeLisandro. It's an excellent jumping off point to reiterate a point that Janine made very early in the presentation about the project management approach that we are taking on this and how staff is more and more on the front end involving coed and communications to make sure that projects that we're taking on, new policies that we're evaluating, have this work being done on the front end. Because having the two of them working together is going to help drive, help figure out how we drive people to the Let's Talk when we're doing that together on the front end. And so I, I know council has heard me say this ad nauseam for a couple of years, that this project management approach is like my whale, right? And so we're getting very close, the project management team just met with me last week, they're very excited. So we're going to launch here shortly in terms of systematizing it. And we're going to see, I think, a pretty dramatic improvement citywide in terms of how that happens.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
Council, if there's nothing else? Very good, thank you very much. This is just information and discussion, had to check really quick if we had to approve this. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda, council is our consent business. We have 12 items and council member Carter has our consent agenda tonight, council member Carter.
Thank you, Mayor, I have not heard of any holds, I'll do a last call. Okay, so with that, I will move to approve items 3.1 through 3.12.
Second.
Motion by council member Carter, second by council member DeLisandro to accept tonight's consent business, as stated. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Council member Carter.
Aye.
Council member DeLisandro.
Aye.
Council member Loman.
Aye.
Council member Moa.
Aye.
Council member Nelson.
Aye.
And council member Rivas. Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero, thank you all very much, thank you, council member Carter, good work on that one. Move to item four, our hearings, resolutions and ordinances. And our first hearing tonight is item 4.1, it's a public hearing regarding the conveyance of Highland Greens Golf Course to Three Rivers Park District with conditions. Ann Catry, our Parks and Recs Director is with us this evening, good evening, Ms. Catry, welcome.
Good evening, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. I am here tonight to help host a public hearing for the proposed conveyance of property of Highland Greens Golf Course to the Three Rivers Park District. If it would be okay with you all, I have just a few slides to, to kick off the conversation this evening. I will not reiterate everything that we discussed back in January, but just more to summarize that conversation. Sorry, little, there we go. Just a, a little bit of a background, presenting a little bit of the challenge and the opportunity that this provides for the city. As you know, the city operated Highland Greens Golf Course and Driving Range from 1974 to 2020. And that's when it closed due to COVID-19. In 2021, we entered into an agreement with Three Rivers Park District to operate the golf course. That has been a successful partnership until the first three-year term ended in December of 2023. One of the directions from city council, when we entered into the agreement in 2021, was to have conversations with the park district about the capital investment that was needed in that facility and how that would be addressed long-term. So we had a lot of those conversations and as you all know, there is a significant amount of capital investment that is needed in that facility. So the city and Three Rivers discussed the options that we had available. And we brought to you on January 29th, a proposal to convey ownership of Highland Greens Golf Course to the Three Rivers Park District. Some key points for, for your consideration this evening. If it were conveyed, ownership to, to Three Rivers Park District, the district would maintain Highland Greens as a golf course. The district is willing to invest the necessary capital investment into the facility to maintain that facility in the long-term. The district is committed to affordable recreation opportunities for people of all ages and abilities. The district offers a lesson program, including leagues and a youth first tee program, to really try to foster golf and get younger folks integrated into the game of golf. And the district is also interested in considering, exploring recreational opportunities for the old driving range portion of the property. In response to the comments heard from council at the end of January, staff, I want to give a shout out to Kevin, our city attorney, Melissa Manderscheid, helped work with council from the Three Rivers Park District to draft a conservation easement, which we have before you this evening. Just a few high-level points as it relates to the conservation easement. It's intended to permanently preserve the property as a public recreation space or public open space. The property cannot be used for residential, commercial, industrial or institutional purposes. The property and structures, however, can be maintained, upgraded, constructed or redeveloped as necessary to accommodate new or existing public recreational purposes. So just a little bit about what we've done in the past month. We did a significant community notification process. We mailed out postcards to property owners within a thousand feet of the border of Highland Greens. We did a Let's Talk survey, Let's Talk Bloomington survey. We did a lot of notification throughout everything that, that Janine Hill was just speaking about. And we posted a notice in the Sun Current. Sorry, I'm not sure why I am struggling with the clicker tonight, but for some reason it is not wanting to respond to me. Okay. Just a little high-level feedback as to the, the feedback that we received on, on our survey. Overall, the sentiment that we received was very much in favor of the transfer of ownership of the property. Almost 20% of the respondents specifically said that they wanted us to do some sort of a conservation easement or prohibit them from developing the property in any way other than a golf course. 90% of the respondents indicated that they want to see a golf course facility maintained at this location. And of that, 90%, close to 60% were specifically in favor of Three Rivers being given ownership. And 13% had no opinion on who owned the facility. And over 20% want to see the facility continue and have turned over to Three Rivers, not sold for redevelopment, i.e. the conservation easement. Mike was going to control and then he left. And with that, I have the motions that we're requesting for you for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Catry. Also, questions, only questions here, let's get the questions out of the way and then we'll open up a public hearing. Any questions? Very good. And one point of clarification, I spent some time on the phone this evening with the chair of Three Rivers Park District, John Gibbs. And he, on this question of, of conveyance and what it would be used as, apparently under state statute, Three Rivers is required, or they, they are not allowed to give away or, or sell any parkland that they own. And so this notion of what if it becomes, you know, if golf falls off the table and, and if it, it becomes untenable, would they sell it for development for condos? They're not allowed to give away or sell any land that they own. That's, that's under state law, so that's good to know as well. Council member Nelson, do you have a question or did you forget to put your hand down from last time? We're back to COVID days now.
Forgot to put my hand down.
We are back to COVID days, thank you. No questions? Very good, then we will open a public hearing. This, folks, is a public hearing for item 4.1 regarding the conveyance of Highland Greens Golf Course to Three Rivers Park District with conditions. So I'm going to open the public hearing now, a couple of housekeeping rules. First of all, if you, if you're here to speak to this, we'd love to hear from you. What we need is you queue up if you could, we've got a sign-in sheet there, we need to know who everybody is. So we, we would appreciate you could, you'd sign in. And ideally, just for, to make it as efficient as possible, sign in before, when you're the next person in line. So you don't have to stand up there and sign in while you're, while you're at the dais. We have a shot clock, Mike, you're working the shot clock tonight. We have five minutes, every speaker gets no more than five minutes. You don't need to use the full five minutes, but you have no more than five minutes. And when it hits five minutes, I will cut you off. Not because I'm a mean guy, not because I don't want to hear what you have to say, but I want to make sure that everybody has the exact same opportunity to, to provide input on this. So five minutes total. And once we conclude the public hearing, we will close the public hearing. The council will have a discussion and we will decide up or down on this matter. So if you are interested in speaking on this, please come on forward. Please.
Well, I haven't had a chance to sign in, my name is Mark Nelson and I currently live at 99th and Nessbit. And I can vividly remember walking out to Highland Greens sometime in the spring of 1965 for my first exposure to the property. And I feel very, very comfortable with the fact that all safeguards in place to maintain this property as a golf property. It's a jewel to the city. As population grows throughout the metropolitan area, we're going to be needing quality open spaces. And just the fact that, that this area will be preserved as it is intended to, I couldn't be any further pleased to have this. So I certainly urge everybody to vote in favor of... So I certainly urge everybody to vote in favor of this with all these safeguards in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Now you could sign in if you would just grab, the clipboard is right on the table there. Thank you. Others who wish to speak to this?
Bill Zucco on Wildwood. I was one of the people leading the fight to keep the course, and I will tell you, I think the direction you're taking is the best thing I've seen in a long time in the city. Three Rivers has been fantastic in running this place. Unbelievable. A little thing that if you don't hit golf balls there, the previous administration could not keep the grass going. Three Rivers gave us grass all year, and whether it's taking down trees or putting in new trees, fabulous. And the thing that we get all new people, not all, but a number of new people because of better signage, more exposure, more diversity, younger, more older, and every time I see the school buses doing the cross-country there and talk to people who never knew our gem was there, saying what a great spot for these high school kids to be doing the cross-country meets, both male and female. So anyways, I love this, and I know the neighbors I talked to think this is the best thing we got going.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Zucco. Others? Good evening.
Good evening. Steve Lipinski, I've been a Bloomington resident since 1975, and I just want to briefly speak in favor of this motion. I used the courses, Duane and Highland, and now I use it with my grandkids, and it's a really good course for kids to come and play. And I just want to state that I am in favor of this motion as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
How's it going? My name's Pat Reagan. So I grew up in the Mendota Heights community and now moving here. My wife and I close on our house next Tuesday or Wednesday, one of them, but we're about three blocks down the road from the golf course, so we're just off of Normandale and Toledo. So I've been playing the golf course maybe the last four or five years, but I grew up in Mendota Heights playing our little par-three there. So we were members at a golf course there in Mendota Heights, my parents were, and I always wanted to play at the par-three instead of the big golf course because it was a more fun place for kids to be and learn how to play golf and play with other kids, and it was really manageable for young people to be there. My wife and I are expecting a baby in July, so it's a place that I hope I can bring my daughter up and teach her how to play golf. And so I'm thrilled that this is going the way that it's going, and I'm excited to have our daughter learn how to play golf there. So good work, and this is great.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Congratulations on the new baby and welcome to Bloomington. Very glad to have you. Others?
We're all for it.
Last chance, anyone wishing to speak? Mike, do we have anybody on the phone wishing to speak?
Mayor, councilmembers, nobody is on the line.
Counsel, we have nobody on the phone. Looks like we've got nobody coming forward to speak. Last chance, last call. Counsel, I would look for a motion to, oh, very good. It's like being an auctioneer. You put that deadline out, and all of a sudden, people come forward.
My name is Debbie Knutson, and I live on Wildwood also, and I too am very much in favor of keeping the golf course open. I learned how to golf there, I don't know, probably 20 years ago, and now I take my grandkids there. They have lots of wonderful lessons going on, so that helps grow the game. That'll help people going there into the future, and it's just a wonderful lifelong sport. You can learn it at any age, and it's just, I couldn't tell you enough good things about it. So I'm very much in favor of keeping it going too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Be sure to sign in, please.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
And I'm still hoping to learn the game. I play it all the time. I'm really hoping to learn it at some point.
Mr. Mayor, she was a teaching pro.
Then we need to connect now.
Hi there.
Good evening. Welcome.
My name is Twyla Bergen, and I live on Wildwood. I really want to keep Highland Greens the way it is. I'm a dog walker for a family who lives right next to the golf course, and the comment was if it wasn't continuing to be a golf course, that they would move. This was the reason that they moved, because they love having the golf course there and not high-rises or apartments. And when I do walk this dog, it's wonderful in the summer to hear the blackbird singing because in the corner, there is that marshy area. So keep it, please.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? If not, counsel, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1. So moved. We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Thank you. Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing on item 4.1. So, council questions or comments? I will say, we have heard, and I've actually seen in emails, and I've seen the comments and some of the information that was forwarded, Three Rivers Park District is doing a heck of a job maintaining and running the course, and just, they're doing a great job with it. I think we can't overlook the fact, the benefits that come from economies of scale. This is, I think, their sixth golf course now, and between the knowledge that comes with owning six golf courses, with the economies of scale that comes from being able to transfer equipment, talent, supplies, or whatever between the courses, and just the general know-how of doing it, it does put them in a very good position to succeed, and they're taking it and they're running with it. And they're doing a very good job with what they're doing at Highland Greens. So I say that because I know that when it's a, when something like that is a small part of a larger operation, a larger city operation, it can sometimes not have the focus that it needs, or somehow not have the resources or the expertise that it needs to be as successful as it could. I won't denigrate in any way our city staff that worked there or did the work there in the past to try and make Highland a good and viable and just a good place to play golf, but I know that Highland Greens is doing a fantastic job because of the benefits that come with the fact that it's, they've got a half dozen golf courses to work with. So I appreciate the work that they're doing there. Councilmember Delisandro, and then Councilmember Lohman, and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Delisandro.
I just want to be clear, I'm 100% in favor of this. I think, you know, whether you're thinking about it from an economic perspective, where we have these enterprise accounts where we're trying to do, you know, break even or better, and when they don't do that well, and we can find somebody who's in partnership with us, who shares our values, who can do that better, I think we should always take that opportunity. So for an economic front, I think it's great. I'm excited to see what they do with the clubhouse and with the greens, with the new trees that they're planting and things like that. I'm excited to see what they'll do there. I'm hoping that they'll hear the feedback that we've gotten, even when we were thinking about things ourselves, right? So that they consider how to make it a four-season type of, you know, venue, that kind of thing. So I'm sure John and others will take all that into consideration. But, you know, it was really nice to be able to say today, I was at a function, kind of a soft opening for a women-owned business in Minneapolis before council tonight, and I was speaking to somebody who runs a, they call it a league of their own, that's what they call it. It's a women's golf league that's like a group of people, and they call it a league, but it's not really. And this one woman goes around and finds par-three courses all over the metro area. They'd never been to Highland, and so I had the pleasure of being able to say to them, you really should, it's amazing, and also, it's only going to get better if we pass this legislation. So I'm excited about it, and I'd be voting for it, and yeah, congrats to Ann and the team, Ann, John, and the team for coming up with a way to make this work. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Lohman.
So just a question, then I'll make a comment. I got a question for Ann here real quick. So with the way that this is composed, I just want to just be sure that I'm clear that there isn't any way that golf could discontinue with the way this has been arranged, with this, the way this is being set up.
Councilmember Lohman, mayor members of the council, I don't think that we can commit in perpetuity Three Rivers to maintain golf. If in 100 years, golf is no longer a thing, then Three Rivers would have to decide what they want to do with the property, again, referring back to what Mayor Bussey said. They are not going to be selling the land. We've put a conservation easement on the property. We can't commit Three Rivers to operating the golf course forever. What I can tell you, though, Councilmember Lohman, is that is their intent. They are only interested in this property as operating as a golf course. In fact, if you think about Three Rivers Park District, they are a regional park agency. That would not be a regional park per their regional park standards if it wasn't a golf course, so they have no interest in owning that property if it's not a golf course. So it's a little bit of a difficult question that you asked, but I hope that helps provide a little bit more context.
No, I thank you, and I think that that is perfectly how I wanted you to respond to that, because I wanted to, you know, I appreciate that. I've learned how to golf here at Highland, and I value that course. And of course, obviously, over time, demographics change in cities, and things need to be changed, and they need to be done differently. You know, back in 1974, and I'm done with you, you don't have to, I'm just going to make my comments, I don't make you stand up for my whole comments, that's a little bit harsh. You know, we purchased this property nearly for $1 million, rustling it away from the market to be able to do the things we want to do. Now, the land value of that property is, you know, nearly 14.9 million in value, the land assessed value, and we're looking to convey this on. And so, you know, I look at this as a future policymaker, and one of the things that I'm concerned about is control of that property long-term and tying the hands of future councils in terms of what can be done. Now, certainly, we can negotiate with Three Rivers. I think this is a great deal, and yes, this is a revenue stream for them, and it's an important piece. But with regards to the demographic changes and some of the things that we've seen that staff has brought before us, in past times, we talked about Highland Greens and about golf in the city, it has not been a pretty picture. Now, certainly, if we convey this over for $1 and give this to them, I'm sure that they will do a fine job. But as I stand today, as a council member, I certainly see the benefits of that, but I would like to see that golf continue there in perpetuity, and it'd be the choice of this council and not some other body to make that decision. And if there's even a small chance that that may not be a possibility, or that this body is not deciding that, I cannot support that. I understand that. This is a great plan and a great proposal to move forward, but a proposal I would like to see would be something where we continue to let this group run it and go ahead and put the capital there. Part of the reason why we did the, which we'll talk about later today, is to get capital for other projects that we have as a part of our capital plan, was to be able to do things like this. If golf is a priority for its residents, certainly it is for me, we should put our money where our mouth is and go ahead and support it, and go ahead and pay for that capital, and ensure for those folks who want to golf in our city that there's no question or no chance that it could be taken away, and that if it does, if it is taken away, that it's a decision that this body, and this body alone, makes. Furthermore, as I look at this, golf as a whole, we are essentially admitting that we can't handle this. And so then the next question has to be what to be done with Duane as well. We have a huge capital situation there that's going on as well. You know, are we going to convey that property as well? I just feel like we should be more strategic with this and think this all the way through with the conclusion of this entire enterprise budget. And so for those reasons and many more that are not stated here, I don't, I mean, I think you get the point of where I'm going with this, I will not be supporting this.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do support this, and I frankly remember my first meeting on City Council right after a special election. It was a closed session to consider RFPs for development at that property, and the room was packed and had to be cleared so we could have a closed-session meeting. And I think that what I have seen in that meeting, previous to that meeting, since then, I just have a number of people I want to thank for getting to this opportunity to really protect Highland Greens into the future. You know, we had a neighborhood group that got together and positively worked with the city to share their concerns. We looked at a number of different proposals over the years for different ways of doing this, including the PGA and some things like that. COVID ended up tabling that. At the end of the day, this, the partnership and now the conveyance to Three Rivers, I think, is the absolute right choice for us to do, to protect Highland Greens as golf for as long as people want to golf, which I don't see that stopping sometime in the future, but that'll be up to people to make their individual decisions if they're going to use it or not. And then even if it changes then, it'll still be recreation park. The other part that I am excited about is to see what type of creativity and resources Three Rivers can bring to bear on that 10-acre available portion that is just sitting there not being used. And I want to see some options and things with that, and I think they're the right group. They have the resources, they have the staff, they have the other amenities, and Mayor, you mentioned it earlier, that they are, because of their scale and number of operations, they can bring things to bear that maybe as a city, we aren't able to bring to it. So I'm super excited. I think this is the right way to go, and, you know, it's just coming full circle for my first meeting for me. So thank you to my colleagues, the staff, for working really hard on this, and to the community for being positively engaged on this. It's a win for everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just start off by saying that, you know, I think it's no secret that I am a very huge proponent of affordable housing, and I think it's great when we have new development. But I am also a very strong supporter of our parks and recreation system and of natural spaces. I think it was the beginning of 2022 where I said I want Bloomington to have the best parks and recreation system in the region. And we are very fortunate to have not only Bloomington parks, but we have Three Rivers in Bloomington. And our family is, we're active users of both. My son spent most of the winter at Highland Hills until he broke his heel last week, but that's a story for another day. And so, you know, I'm really excited about this, this opportunity for the city and for Bloomington residents now, and for generations to come, to have this conservation easement, to have a park entity like Three Rivers who runs a stellar operation across the region. And so I want to thank staff for your hard work on this, and yeah, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. This is honestly a very difficult decision for me because, and as I have expressed in the previous meetings that we had on this, because just the value that I have, that I just have a really hard time letting go of property, especially in Bloomington where we just don't have property anymore. And in the next 50, 75, 100 years, the needs will be completely different. I won't be here anymore. Just about everybody in this room won't be here in 100 years, but our grandchildren or great-grandchildren will be here. And so the struggle I had was, are we tying the hands of those generations that are coming? But as I continue to think on it and continue to think on it and reflect on what those councils that came before us have done, and their purpose, purposeful thought of preserving natural green spaces within Bloomington, and how that has translated to just the beauty and the passion that our residents have, I think there was no doubt in my mind that if I went back and asked someone from that council that they would regret holding aside that property. And that ultimately is what And that ultimately is what kind of swayed my mind. Giving away that control is not necessarily giving away control, but preserving for the next generation, something that I won't regret when I look back on this in 30, 40, 50 years. And knowing what a great partner that Three Rivers is and how they run their operations and the fact that their policy and their purpose is to create green space and keep them green spaces. And so that's what swayed my mind to, to be supportive of this is the fact that when I'm 80 and I look back on this, I won't regret that we preserved this as a green space. And so that's, that's why I will be supporting this, even though it was a very difficult decision for me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Rivas, you want in?
I just support it. I'm not going to add any more rhetoric to it. I'm just 100% behind it. I think it's a good idea, and I, I hope it works out in the best possible way.
Brilliant. Thank you, Councilmember. I think the, the final thing that I'll say, I mean, Councilmember Lohman brought up putting our money where our mouth is, and I mean, in a way, I think we're doing this. We've been talking for a long time about this stop-doing list, what, what makes sense from a city perspective that we stopped doing. Now, we've got the opportunity here to stop doing and continue doing at the same time. What a deal, right? And so this is a great opportunity for that, and I think it's, it's a creative partnership. It's a strong partnership. You know, long before we were sitting here, the city of Bloomington and Three Rivers Park District were sitting across the table from each other, putting together a productive, respectful, and strong relationship. And we're seeing the benefits of that now. And I couldn't be more supportive of this. I think it's fantastic. Can't wait to see where they take this. I know the leadership there is supportive of this, and I know they're really good at what they do. So I'm looking forward to, looking forward to continuing golf at Highland Greens, and I'm looking forward to getting that darn fence down as soon as we possibly can. So. Councilmember Delisandro, question?
Just a quick point of order question. You know, we had, we had, for example, we have had recently the Department of Transportation reconvey to us property that they took via right-of-way on 35W. Is there any preclusion in the contract we're talking about here that if push came to shove and Three Rivers wanted to convey it back to us, they couldn't do that?
Mr. Verbrugge, I don't believe there's anything prohibiting that.
I'm going to ask Mr. Toski to weigh in.
Mr. Toski.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here tonight, by the way.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, and the conservation easement, there's nothing that would prevent that. Now, Three Rivers, there's a state law that applies to park districts where they'd have to get judicial approval to convey back to us, which would probably be freely given, but nothing to prevent that. That's just a state law they have to follow to, to dispose of their property.
Great. Okay, so, so not, not, I'm not suggesting that, that that's the answer to the folks who might have concerns about that, but, you know, 30 years from now, they could give it back to us, and it wouldn't be a big deal if that's what we wanted to have happen potentially, so.
Correct.
Right? Okay, great. Thanks. I appreciate it.
Counsel, no more comments on this? Counsel, I would look for action on it in 4.1.
I'd be happy to make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am making the motion to adopt an ordinance to convey real property located in and owned by the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, and known as Highland Greens Golf Course with conditions.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Carter to adopt the ordinance to convey real property located in and owned by the city of Bloomington, known as Highland Greens. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Lohman in opposition. Councilmember Delisandro.
Just a point of order here. It doesn't say two, two, Three Rivers. Is that okay? Or with Three Rivers?
I am trusting our.
Very good.
I'm trusting our legal team to.
Very good. Okay. Excellent. I move to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the conservation easement agreement in substantially the same form as the agreement contained in this agenda packet.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Carter to authorize myself and the city manager to execute the conservation agreement. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Lohman in opposition. So congratulations to our partners at Three Rivers Park District. Congratulations to Bloomington golfers. Congratulations to the neighborhood. Looking forward to seeing where this ends up. I'm excited about this partnership, excited to see improvements that I know are bouncing around in all of their minds over at Three Rivers about what they can do there. And I think this is a good deal for everybody, so well done. Congratulations. Our second public hearing of the evening regarding our sign ordinance update. We've got city code amendments that we're going to be talking about. We've got Nick Johnson, our senior planner, here this evening. Good evening, Mr. Johnson, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Sorry.
Why don't we just give him 30 seconds here to.
No problem.
Clear and settle, and we'll, we'll dive in. How about that? You can get that computer to work. All right, Mr. Johnson. Hope you don't take it personally that the place emptied out, but.
Now, I got a few important.
You got the diehards here. That's good.
Okay. Thank you very much. So Mayor, I heard you at the start of this meeting say that we've been talking about this for too long, so.
We have been talking about this for a long time, yes.
So I better wrap it up here. Yeah, thank you very much for, it has been a long process. I'll have a slide to that effect. But I do have an agenda slide here for you just to go over the content I plan to cover here in my brief presentation. So getting to the process and timeline itself, so this has been a very robust process. It actually started in 2022 with a couple false starts and, but getting the research engine going. We've done multiple study sessions at both the planning commissions and city council level. Having a process this long has allowed for a good amount of public engagement, and I feel like we've had really good dialogue with a number of different parties from the business community and other signage installers and other representatives or interested parties in this process. So that's really been exciting. The study sessions that we held in November gave us the ability to present to you a full draft of the ordinance, so that really let us dig into the details and allowed the public, I believe, a good amount of time to react to the specific provisions within it, which I think was helpful, and we'll, we'll kind of highlight tonight how, how that has translated in different ways. And then finally, you're here at the, the public hearing in February. So the planning commission did hold a public hearing at the start of the month. We're presenting this to you here for potential adoption tonight, and we are proposing one additional activity associated with this project a year from now. I'll talk a little bit about that at the end. We've presented these project goals consistently throughout our process. We've tried to adhere to these goals as much as we can. Whenever we're confronted with a, a policy question about the sign code, we really try and put it through this three-pronged test. And I think we have adhered to that as much as possible. So just a point about kind of legal's influence in this process. So Kevin Toski specifically, but the legal department in general has been a co-author of this ordinance, not just a reviewer. So signage regulations represent an intersection between land use law and expression. So it's a little bit different or complicated in different ways than other, some of the other zoning provisions that we bring before you. So it's been really helpful to have them be a direct partner in this process. And then belt and suspenders-wise, we have had our existing sign code and our proposed sign code reviewed by a nationally renowned expert, John Baker with Green Espl, a local firm here. And he was really helpful to us in our process, providing multiple touchpoints and a lot of good feedback. On the slide there as well, just providing some general concepts that signage regulations have to follow and kind of inform the legal landscape around sign codes. So this is 140-page document. It's very long, so I don't want to go into all of the ins and outs of it, and we didn't do that to that extent in the weeds in the staff report either. What we did prepare is a summary exhibit. And so the sign, or the, I'm sorry, the staff report did have Exhibit A, which was a summary of every change that was included in the, the full-scale ordinance. The bulk of the content is the deletion of the existing sign code and billboard provisions, and then establishing the new signage and billboard provisions in Chapter 21, which is of course the updated zoning code chapter. Other changes included some changes to our variance, sign variance provisions, and a few definition changes just for alignment purposes. So the new sign code does represent a departure from our existing regulations in a number of areas. The staff report went into detail on all of these items listed on the slide. So for that reason, I'm happy to take any questions about any of these individual items and how it's different from our existing sign code. But I just want to put this out, up here for, for, to stimulate any potential questions or on, on the part of you or the public kind of following this process. So as we provided a full draft sign code to you and the planning commission in November, we did want to highlight what some of the minor changes that occurred since that time. We'll talk about even some, some more changes here a little bit later, but just some formatting issues with our temporary sign provisions, kind of aligning temporary sign allowances for non-commercial and commercial speech are a really important legal conformance issue. And then just doing some refinement to our electronic sign dwell time provisions, and I can talk more about that here in a bit. So just now getting to kind of the meat and potatoes of what I plan to focus on here. So the planning commission did review the full ordinance on February the 1st. They held a public hearing. Two persons from the public spoke at that hearing. Planning commission did recommend approval following extensive discussion. As part of their discussion, they did reach consensus on three amendments to the draft sign code that staff presented. First, they increased the amount of signs allowed on a parking structure from one to two per elevation, and that's facing public streets only. They did expand allowances for temporary signage for commercial promotions by creating a large tenant site category and expanding the number of days. And the staff draft ordinance did have language within it that would have allowed for the conversion of billboards to digital. They did strike that language and did not support that effort. So just a point about these, and I, if you want to dig into detail of kind of what, what the language changes were associated with these amendments, I do have extra slides to that effect. So now, so PC did recommend approval. I do want to highlight some of the written correspondence that we've received. And, you know, some of these parties have also had meetings with us or have good ongoing conversations or engagement with staff. And so I thought a good way to do that maybe was to try and boil down the issues that they've identified to kind of broader topics or categories of issues. And so there's nine issues that I'll highlight for you tonight. And this color-coded chart kind of identifies which of the issues these different parties are focused on in terms of the different changes or amendments that they would suggest to the city of Bloomington as we consider a new sign code. I'm happy to dig into these in more detail. Some of them include little nuances associated with them, so it's maybe unfair to boil them down just to categories, but for the purposes of this, I think it's the best way to do it. So there's three, this is the list of the nine issues that I referred to, and I do want to be specific that we are labeling them by letter. Part of what our goal is tonight is if you do choose to make any amendments to the planning commission version of the recommended ordinance, that we do create a good legislative record of what any of those potential changes you might support would be. So these are the nine issues that represented those topics across the top of the table on the previous slide I presented to you. And as you all know, reviewing many city code amendments throughout these processes, these are all very dynamic and ongoing environments that include work up into the whistle sometimes. And so one of the, three of the changes, Kraus Anderson, one of the consistent kind of engaged parties throughout this process, certainly manage and own a number of retail sites in Bloomington. They identified five issues that they would like to see changes within the sign code. And staff has been having ongoing conversations with them as well as doing additional follow-up analysis on some of their requests they've been making. And we do want to highlight three of those areas where recognizing that the planning commission has since made their recommendation, but based on our follow-up analysis and these ongoing conversations, we do want to communicate that staff is supportive of some of these changes that they're proposing. And so those are the three that we will highlight. If you want to go into detail in any of the other six, I do have slides for all of them except the first one, and the reason being is that the planning commission resolved that request as part of their amendments in their process. So with that, I will kind of present these three items that Kraus Anderson, as being engaged in this process, has made requests or made, identified to staff as being important to them. So the first issue, Request F, this has to do with the sign code establishing maximum sizes for individual building signs. It's not actually serving as the cap. That's done through a building frontage calculation. And in these districts that we'll talk about, you're allowed to have an unlimited number of building signs so long as you don't exceed your overall bucket of allowance or square footage of signage. But this has to do with that the initial staff draft reviewed at the planning commission as well as consistently through this process proposed two caps on individual max building sign size in the Class III sign district, which is, for reminders, is kind of the bulk of the commercial and industrial properties in Bloomington. So the majority of sign permits are going to be reviewed and subject to the Class III sign district. We proposed a max sign, individual sign size of 250 square feet. In the Class V sign district, the difference between Class V and Class III, Class V represents our more mixed-use zoning district. So these are environments that we're trying to encourage buildings closer to the street. So in effect, these signs are also closer to the public right-of-way. But the, the way these sites are set up per the performance standards in these zoning codes is that they're intended to be more friendly to pedestrian and kind of that scale activity, if that makes sense. So I just want to point out that kind of some of the staff's thinking in terms of when we develop some of these standards, it had to do with the discrepancy or the difference between the intent of more general and industrial, commercial and industrial zoning districts versus mixed-use zoning districts. I just want to point that out. As part of these changes that Kraus is requesting in their letter, they actually requested just raising the cap in both districts to 400 square feet. When we looked at this issue, one of the things I want to point out that, what was it intended to do? So the existing sign code does not have any caps. This is a new policy proposal on individual signs. But what it does do in effect is that the larger your building is, it continues to give you less and less percentage of sign area based on wall area elevation. So in effect, it kind of serves as a decap, it has a cap effect on very large buildings by reducing the amount of signage they get per the amount of wall area. So absent that, with using these new methodologies of building frontage in this case, we were looking to kind of create a, if a very large building or a very long building did not have lessening amounts of percentages like the existing code, in effect, you could have a very, you could have a scenario, you could have a very large wall sign, in effect. And so what these caps were trying to do is try and get out in front of scenarios where very large signs could be installed in kind of settings where maybe it wasn't so appropriate. So going back to that point about what are we trying to protect against, we went back to the drawing board on that a little bit, and we've proposed this track change language for you on the slide. We've shared this language with the submitter as well, wherein the caps would only apply when a sign is within 250 feet of a dwelling on a residential property. And so I think it's an important change in terms of what we're trying, what that standard is really trying to protect against in terms of having very large signs kind of with their typically illuminated, kind of imposing a larger stature over residential properties. So I do want to point that out. As part of these changes too, I would also identify that as opposed to having separate standards for the mixed-use district and the Class III, we are proposing to just align that as 250 square feet. So I'll certainly let the public speak for themselves, but I think the net effect of this proposed change would be that in most cases, there would not be a cap on an individual sign. It would only be governed by their building frontage calculation, if that makes sense. I'm sorry, that was probably a lot in the weeds, but it's a technical issue and do want to try and explain it thoroughly. So back to my point about labeling the requests by letter, we also have options on a few of these slides. And so if council is supportive of some of these changes or alternative options, we do want to try and identify the, the. do want to try and identify the language that you're supporting. So again, dating back to that, or getting back to that comment about the legislative record. So on this one, option one would be no changes. Option two, which is staff-supported, would be going with this track change language here on your screen, keeping the caps at 250 square feet, but having them only apply when a building sign is within 250 feet of a dwelling designated residential property. Hopefully that makes sense. And then option three, we just listed there, that again, that was the proposal by Kraus Anderson to just raise the caps as opposed to looking at the residential. And by the way, I have extra slides that show kind of examples of different sign sizes. I know some of this stuff is kind of nebulous when you're just talking about random numbers, but if that helps kind of put context to it, I can show some of those if requested. So getting through a couple of the, again, the three highlighted items that I do want to update for you. So the next one is building sign allowance. This one's a little more straightforward. Kraus Anderson felt that the previous proposal, the one recommended by planning commission, it has, in the Class III, it has 1.25 square feet of signage per lineal foot of tenant space or building frontage. They thought that the, and in the mixed-use district, it's one foot per lineal foot. They thought that that should just align between those, both of those districts. Again, that was recommended with the, on the auspice or with the backing of trying to think about mixed-use districts, a little bit more pedestrian-friendly or scale signs. But after doing additional research and analysis about some of our multi-tenant sites, we were in concurrence with Kraus on this particular standard. So we would be supportive of raising that to 1.25 in the mixed-use sign district Class V. So there's an alternative option for you to consider there on that item. And then on Request H, this has to do with max freestanding sign size. This one's fairly straightforward as well. Freestanding signs in both the Class III and Class V were capped at 100 square feet as the maximum size. This change would align with Kraus to raise both of those caps, 250 square feet. And we did have to make some updates to the notes because if you recall, we were having greater sign allowances for signs that are in proximity or along interstate highways, 35W, 494, and trunk highway 77. The increased height still exists, but basically we just strike the last sentence in Table Note 2 because they're already allowed to be 150 square feet. I hope that makes sense, as shown on the screen there. Yeah. The same change to the pylon sign table as well. So again, just raising the maximum sign size from 100 square feet to 150 square feet. And again, all of the signage allowance is based on the amount of lot frontage they have. That's a new standard within this code. So even for smaller sites, they're likely not able to get up to the 150 square foot cap. So it does have that mechanism within it. So I just want to point out those three changes. Electronic sign dwell time, this has been a popular topic during this process. One of the things that the planning commission and maybe the council too, request is that we just prepare a map showing kind of the surrounding environment of Bloomington. And so what you'll see here is, and again, just to, for context, dwell time is the amount of time that the electronic sign has to remain static or not moving. The message has to stay consistent before it's allowed to instantaneously transition to the next message, not commercial or commercial. And so within kind of the landscape around Bloomington, you'll see a very wide range of standards. You'll see up to an hour, and then you'll see as low as eight seconds, of course. There's other communities that have even lower standards than that. And so it's a very wide range. Bloomington right now currently is somewhere in the middle, although I will point out that a good proportion of our electronic signs do take advantage of the limited text option. And so they're already allowed to have a dwell time of eight seconds under our existing standards, as well as would be proposed to be. The one thing I do want to point out about this is that this is not necessarily reflective of all billboard standards across all of these jurisdictions. We attempted to capture that, and I think we've captured it accurately, but I acknowledge it's possible that one jurisdiction might have separate standards for that. And then related to our standards, just a note about our slide is that the dwell time for billboards is separate in our code from our standard electronic dwell time in the subject to all other electronic signs. So again, for example, the one out here on Old Chappie would be subject to a different dwell time allowance than the four billboards that exist in town should one of them be converted to digital. So I do want to point that out. But I mean, hopefully this is helpful. It provides you kind of an idea of the landscape around the issue. And when thinking about it, I mean, the two primary considerations has to do with traffic safety and then has to do with community aesthetics. So as this technology continues to get more affordable, more people will utilize electronic signs because you can get more messages out there. You can pivot and change your message, of course. And so as they deplore more of them, and if they are allowed to have a smaller dwell time, of course, you could see a higher propensity of changing messages throughout your commercial areas throughout town. So next steps, hopefully tonight or when appropriate, we can proceed with adoption of a new sign code. There is a fair amount of backend work that does have to happen beyond a typical zoning code amendment with this because we have a lot of informational materials as well as internal permit procedures on our permit portal system that have to be updated to reflect the new sign code. And then again, back to my comment about the mayor's point about we've been working on this for too long. I'm not suggesting that we work on it forever. However, when adopting a new policy of this level or extent, which has a lot of complexity associated with it, when you're adopting new mechanisms and how you calculate signage, we as staff just think it's appropriate to do a one-year lookback in this case. I know we've done that similar to our mobile food standards. I believe we did that with RVs as well. But what we intend to track as a staffer in this process is just kind of all of the sign requests as well as sign permit outcomes to ensure that we're getting the positive outcomes we seek from the new code, as well as catalog potential refinements and improvements over the course to the next year, kind of similar to how we do miscellaneous issues ordinance, if you're familiar with that process. And then at that time, we can certainly present those findings to planning commission and council in some form that they deem appropriate, whether it be a report or a presentation or whatever makes sense. And if need be, we certainly can make adjustments to this policy if it's necessary. And I think I said this at the November study session, but ideally what we're trying to present to you is that we have the right structure in place. There might be some little tweaks to the numbers that happen over time to get, to kind of set the dials perfect for Bloomington. But we want to make sure that we, and feel we do have the correct structure in place. So with that, I do have a couple potential motions for you. I do have language that would follow the planning commission recommended version of the ordinance. In addition, I do have an alternative motion that includes language at the bottom of it, subject to the amendments that staff highlighted and identified in those three slides that I presented to you. So again, numbering these items by F2, G2, H2, the letter refers to the request. The number refers to the option that I identified on the slide. And if you wanted to explore any other of those requests, you certainly could do so using that system if you so choose. And there is a summary publication, recommendation as well, resolution. So I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So council, prepare your questions. I've got a couple to start with here, if we could. You mentioned that the planning commission eliminated the conversion of billboards to electronic display. So is the proposal coming forward, does that reflect the planning commission's striking of that, or is that still in there somewhere?
That's correct, Mayor. I'll even show you that language that we had previously, but the draft that planning commission reviewed, and it was based on some discussion and hopefully interpretation of kind of the council discussion at that time. But our draft did include an allowance for digital conversion. And the reason, or the interplay, not to get too far in the weeds, but the interplay that needs to be created is that all of these billboards are legally non-conforming. And so you are allowed to expand legal non-conformities, but only by ordinance, only by specific allowance within your code. And so what this provision was intended to do was to allow for that conversion because when you, typically when you convert a billboard, the depth of it sometimes has to increase in order to accommodate the cabinets and new technology, is my understanding. I'm not an expert, but that's my understanding. And then we also had language create an exception in the maximum sign size for our electronic sign standards too, that was struck in order to kind of, and yes, to answer your question, the draft before you, in both, the planning commission draft and the one in your packet does not include this language.
Got it. Thank you. The second question I had, so the time we've spent on this, the work that has been done within the planning commission in conjunction with legal and the work that you did throughout the community with feedback and so on, would you characterize this as being a, being reflective of a more business-friendly approach to signage in the city of Bloomington?
Mayor, thank you for that comment. I invite the business community to tell me as part of the public hearing whether they feel that way. I appreciate the interplay that we've had, particularly with Kraus, but other actors too, and they've given us good feedback because there's just so many different property types and building types of how this code will translate, that it's hard to, it's hard to get out in front of or anticipate every property, how it will affect them specifically in Bloomington. But what I would say is that whereas I think there's been some discussion around increasing the sign area allowances, some of which I talked about, there's other things too, like allowing signs on four, on four sides of a building, which isn't currently allowed, by not dictating uniformity of construction, which is of interest to some business types. So there are some areas where I am very confident that are good benefits to the business community, and I am happy with that. So, and generally speaking, you know, we've had good participation from people throughout this process, and I'm happy for that. But the people who've been speaking at the meetings is a fairly small group, and to me, that indicates that we're doing a good job getting out in front of it and that we've presented a product that is not screaming bloody murder, maybe. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. So you had mentioned that this is coming back again. Was it, is that November next year? When, when was this coming back again, just so I?
Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, we would recommend that whenever the policy, whenever the sign code is adopted, that you get a year's worth of data and then a report back at that point. So it's not a, it's not a time-specific thing because it's based on when you choose to proceed and adopt something, but we think you'd get a good amount of data within a year.
Okay. So we'd be able to come back and look at this again. This is real, real complicated. So then just, just two things then here, then, so then with the visibility piece, you said you had some pictures of that? I just, I do want to see that because what may be visible for one person may not be visible for, for other people at 250.
Yeah. So thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Lowman. I don't have endless pictures of different examples of sign areas in Bloomington, but I do have a few that are kind of notable ones. This, you know, the home furniture property, that's a fairly newer development. It's a very large retail building. They have a number of signs on their north and south elevation, which are, which are quite large and do face the highway, and they've been able to accommodate those wall area, or I'm sorry, those wall signs kind of within both the individual cap allowance as well as, this is one of the sites we did test the new ordinance on and would work with our provisions. IKEA, of course, well, well-visible property. These are signs that are actually subject to the CX2 zoning district, so they wouldn't be subject to a cap. But I just thought for the purposes of scale, that it's a really well-known sign and something that people would recognize. The Hyatt Regency in Bloomington Central Station, of course, that's a 210 square foot sign. Bell Bank, the reason we included this one is that it's important to recognize how signs on tall office buildings, while they look actually quite small, based on the scale of the building, and then you're not just talking about horizontal distance, you're talking about vertical distance too. So that's actually a 329 square foot sign, but to my, I mean, and some of this stuff is subjective to a degree, but to me, does not look like an increasingly large sign. Walgreens, just close here to Civic Plaza, 60 square feet. Subaru along 494, 200 and 108 foot, square foot sign. Extra Space Storage along Penn Avenue, not far from here. That's one of the larger ones that we've permitted here in town. Some freestanding examples, so festival.
So, I mean, thanks for all the examples, but help me understand the visibility piece of it. So it can't be more than 250 feet visible. So, you know, let's just take the target one. So does it matter what the size of it is? That's the piece I'm trying to understand. What, what exactly does that mean from a, from an ordinance standpoint?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, so if I may, I'm going to go back to the slide. Are you talking about the individual sign maximum caps?
Yeah.
We're talking about?
Yeah, because that was the piece I'm trying to understand. You said that, okay, I have a sign up, and then 250 feet from that, that's what I'm trying to, kind of. Then my next question, I'll just give it to you now, is the, if that is electrified or there's light coming out of that, I'm just trying to have a good understanding of what that means. You know, we talk about, you know, in our, in our lighting piece, how that operates and how that impacts. I know that was something that we saw on Lyndale and various parts of Penn Avenue where you've got these signs out there, and I just want to understand what the impact is on the residential areas.
Yeah, so just to.
Protections there are.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Lowman. So to go back to the idea of individual cap or a cap on an individual building sign, it has, it's not applicable to freestanding signs. They have their own kind of separate maximum areas. But the thinking behind that is that when we started this process, we recognized a few signs in town that had been installed that we had received feedback about from the public that raised concerns for them, just in terms, not just along, along with their brightness, but in terms of the scale or the size of these signs, especially when they interacted close to residential properties. When they're just within fully commercial areas, it presents less of a challenge in that regard. So the idea behind creating a cap on the maximum size of an individual sign within 250 feet of a residential dwelling is in order to get out in front of that situation where you'll have a very large wall sign that might not be appropriate for the environment in which it's installed in. So that's kind of the key there.
Okay. I get it now. Thanks for bringing me along there because I wasn't, I wasn't quite grasping that, how that other stuff you were showing me fit into this. So, thank you.
Hopefully, and yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, if I may, that what I, hopefully what I, hopefully what's shown in the context of some of those sign examples too, is that in my, in my opinion, you can have a very effective commercial message with a 250 square foot sign. A 250 square foot sign is actually quite large in most circumstances. So I, we are proposing a cap, and specifically when close to residential properties, but that's not to say that you can't have effective commercial messages.
So this is my secondary piece around the lit piece of it?
Yes.
Can you help me understand that? So if I've got this 250 and it's lit and my, my house is right there and I'm looking straight at it, what protections do I have?
Yeah, thank you. Good question. So I actually have a slide. It's related to a different issue, but it has our sign brightness requirements on it. So whether it be an electronic sign or whether it be a, just a lit sign, a channel letter sign that is internally lit that is emitting light out from it, it is subject to maximum brightness requirements. Brightness is measured in nits, it's scandalous per square meter, but as opposed to like the amount of lumens that the actual fixture comes out, the brightness reading is a measure of the intensity of the light as perceived from your eye away from the sign, not at the sign itself. And so whether it be a lit sign or just a, or an electronic sign, it's subject to the same brightness regulations. And when it's close to residential properties, it has to have a lower level of brightness than when it's just in a commercial area or along 35W, 494. Those provisions are actually, and sorry, I'm struggling to find this thing while I'm talking here.
That's right. I think I've, I think I've got it from what, from what you're saying. So there are protections out there, and are any other cities?
There, it's way too small to see anywhere. Sorry. That was pointless.
And are any other cities utilizing this type of standard, or is this?
Yeah. So one, one other related point I want to make, I did not research the extent to which other cities have maximum brightness standards for sign lighting, but what they often do, and maybe Bloomington is a little more sophisticated in this regard, we have a fairly extensive lighting ordinance. Landell Pease was a previous planner who was like owned that issue, is his baby for sure. But we have a meter where we can measure sign brightness. What most cities do is they either say you can be lit or you can't be lit, depending on how close you are to residential. And we have a standard like that too, and it's set at 100 feet from a residential site as opposed to 250, or in our case, I think it's 550 in our lighting ordinance. So other cities do do that, but they regulate it by a distance and by either can't be lit or can be lit. I'm sure some cities do regulate nits and brightness like Bloomington, but I would say we're probably more in the smaller camp than the larger camp in that regard.
Given that we can come back to this in a year. Given that we can come back to this in a year, maybe there'll be no complaints at all, what we got out there. I'm just going to leave it at that, but I just wanted to make sure I understand what we're doing.
Councilmember Delisandro, and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of specific questions for you, and it's related to some of the stuff we talked about. So thanks for pulling up the extra space storage one, which is a constant, constant complaint space. Can we retroactively make them make a 250-square-foot sign?
Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, signs are also subject to legal nonconformity. So they would be granted the same rights as, say, a structure that was built under a previous code. So.
Okay. What about the light limits?
That, Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, so they, they are subject to that, and it's some of those, sometimes those things are kind of needles in your side or of ongoing enforcement issue, or, you know, it's kind of stye in your foot. Is that a better analogy? Where you'll do enforcement, they will comply for a period of time. And I'm not suggesting this on any individual property right now. I'm just saying sometimes it is a, these, these signs do have dimmer switches. So sometimes what you'll find is that a sign was dimmed down, and it presents less of a problem, and then over time, it either, it increases. And that's not the majority. That's just in a few occasions that I can think of. But it does happen.
A 400-square-foot sign, the Bell Bank sign is smaller than that extra space storage sign, and it is in a residential, it sits across from a residential area, and it is lit bright as heck every time, all night long. And I don't understand it. So to the extent that we can actually solve people's problems by not just creating these standards, but enforcing them and figuring out what to do, I'd love to see all the list of legal nonconforming people and, I don't know, carrot and stick them into getting conformance, maybe. I don't know. I'd throw that out there as a comment more than anything later. Okay. I'm confused by the sign lighting changes, generally speaking, though. So are, it's, there's, there's, there's text in here that says that they are not to be illuminated, and then there's text in there that, that says something like, there's a, there's a requirement for when they're required to be turned off. But I didn't find the language for that. Is that in some other, is that in the lighting standard, or how does that work?
Yeah. There's a couple of things going on here. Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, we have a standard for electronic signs that say during the nighttime, and we define that as 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, that they sign, if it's within 150 feet of a residential property, would have to stay static, which means it's not allowed to change messages anymore, which is kind of the biggest driver of the nuisance characteristic, or would need to be extinguished. So that's one thing. Our sign lighting provisions do require that signs within 100 feet of residential properties, they can't be illuminated. And that can be an issue with non, again, with legal nonconformity. But one of the problems with our existing sign code is that there's very, there's varied standards across all of our sign districts and special uses. Sometimes it's 50 feet, can't be lit. Sometimes it's 100, sometimes it's 150. So we're trying to just, you know, make it uniform across, and we'll deal with it as we go from that point forward. So that's one piece of it. In terms of, I know during your, we, I sent this in an email to Councilmember Lowman about the residential livability ordinance. That has to do with lighting, not signs, interior lighting. But basically what that set up in our lighting ordinance is that when buildings are within, are within close proximity to residential uses, they should extinguish their interior lights when they're no longer open for business. That doesn't preclude them from having motion lighting for security or other things like that. But that is something that was adopted back in 2022.
Great. Lots of nonconformant going on. Okay. Another question, does, does that, so that nighttime standard in proximity to residential, then, is that, that the new ordinance is going to be that it's within 100 feet? You mentioned something about 550 feet, and so that's being eliminated, and it's now to 100 feet?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, so their, electronic signs are not allowed within 100 feet of residential uses. If they're outside, if they're between 101 feet and 150 feet, then they're subject, and visible to, they're subject to the nighttime restriction. But if they're beyond 150 feet, those signs would be allowed to stay on and change their message under the, the draft. But they are subject to brightness standards. And those brightness standards, if they're, those kick into play, where it has to be a duller, or a lower level of light intensity when it's within 500 feet of residential uses.
Okay.
Sorry, we're throwing so many random.
So, so can't, can't be illuminated in 100, within 100 feet, can be illuminated, but has to be turned off or, or static if it's 101 to 150. If it's outside of that, it's good to go. But what was the fourth one? 500 and something? Just making sure I have them all.
Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, the lower level of brightness-
Yes.
Is within 500.
Applicable. Okay, great.
Within 500 feet. But I want, do want to make one clarification, that the, the signs with between 101 feet, 150 feet, that's electronic signs only.
Understood.
That's not just your standard lit sign. Standard lit sign could be lit and remain lit. It would just be subject to the brightness.
Right. Okay. So, so I, I have a particular constituent that probably came to you all at some point, a church at 86th and Fremont, who wants an electronic sign out there. And so I'm just trying to make sure I understand this, so that I can help them understand whether they should come back to you or not. So we could talk about that offline. The last thing I wanted to bring up was, does requirement H give our good friends at Schmidt Music what they were asking for when they came a couple of years ago?
Forgive me, let me, yeah, yeah, I will say, without knowing which exact, I think it's the area, the sign area. Yes.
They didn't want to have to change the, the monument, because the monument itself was already made of stone, et cetera. They just wanted to replace the frame in there, and we said no. And so now they still, to this day, have a floppy banner sign up there. And I'm sure they'd be excited to hear that we actually solved this for them.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, so their issue was height, and the new code will alleviate that issue.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was just curious if you could speak more to why the planning commission removed the billboard language.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, so I think that they had a robust discussion about it. There was one or two members that were actually somewhat supportive of it initially, in terms of that they wanted, they felt it was supportive of business community, and wanted to continue to support Bloomington as a pretty dynamic economic environment. But then, as they continue to discuss it on and on, they also, also felt like some of those provisions are kind of reflective of pass-through communities. I don't know if they meant more kind of outer metro in terms of some of the digital conversions or just more billboards. I don't know exactly what they, I don't want to read too far between the lines. But there was discussion about how smaller dwell times, as well as allowing for digital conversion, would be supportive of business, but they were concerned about kind of the aesthetics of it. So ultimately, they, as a, as a group, and it was four members, decided to, to strike that.
Okay. Okay. I'll leave my comments for the end.
Save your comments, if you could, please. Well, any other questions of Mr. Johnson here? If not, I would like to move on, council, to our public hearing. And this is a public hearing. I will officially call this for item 4.2. This is a public hearing regarding the city code amendments, our sign ordinance update. So folks wishing to speak on this, I, I think you were here during the first round of housekeeping stuff, so please sign in. Five minutes. What am I forgetting? That's it. Identify yourself, please, and off we go. Same, same kind of thing. And when I cut you off, I'm not being a mean guy. That's the other one I wanted to say.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Matthew Wieland. I'm with Clear Channel Outdoor. We own and operate the only four billboard structures located in the city. Just a few comments tonight. Certainly first want to thank your city staff. Nick's been great to work with. Recognize this is a very complicated, complex project. Really, my comments is revolve around our request to upgrade and modernize our existing billboards. They're nonconforming billboards. They've been in your city a long time. They're going to remain a long time as nonconforming uses. Would like an opportunity to upgrade them. As we've done in many communities around you, we've upgraded our signs in Burnsville, Minneapolis, Eagan, at the airport, and 22 other communities in the Twin Cities. We currently operate 82 signs. The main reasons we want to upgrade our signs, excuse me, one is it does allow more opportunities for your local businesses to advertise. Currently, 75% of our advertisers are local, so we are a key tool for those, key marketing tool for those businesses. Secondly, digital billboards allow us to further our commitment to the communities we work in. All the communities we work in, we provide community messaging. You guys talked about public relations earlier today. Burnsville's a great example. They use it for their meetings, their festivals, events, community facilities, and public education. So every community we're in, we give them time on the boards. In addition to cities, we do, we partner with law enforcement and emergency management. We're one of the fastest ways to get Amber Alerts out. We do believe our signs in your city, they're located in appropriate commercial industrial corridors. We are very sensitive to where we do digital signs. We don't want to interfere with residential. We're also very concerned with safety. We've proven we can operate these safely since we put the first ones in in 2006. So we've been operating them, what, that 18 years? There are, the main things or changes we're asking for tonight, one would be the conversion of digital, or I'm sorry, nonconforming billboards to digital. Second is the dwell times. We are requesting an eight-second dwell time. That is based on safety studies by the Federal Highway Administration. Digital billboards are allowed by the Federal Highway Administration. They're allowed by state law, only subject to local law, of course. So truly, my comments, the last thing I want to add is, we do have a letter of recommendation from the Minneapolis Regional Chamber, who represents Bloomington businesses, and their recommendation was rated at our recommendations. And these are all the comments I also had in the letter I submitted. But really appreciate your guys' consideration of these requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wieland. Mr. Vingi, good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Ken Vingi with Kraus Anderson Realty Company, President, Vice President of Properties, and I want to thank staff for working with us on the sign ordinance. We have met and talked over the many points, and including what's in our letter and what's in your, in your packet. Staff recommendations tonight for a number of these items, we support. So the F2, the G2, and the H2, we're all in favor of those. And again, thanks to Nick and Glenn for their willingness to work with us. However, there's always a couple of little things that we have to come around. And I just want to clarify that, you know, as I look at this, Kraus Anderson, we have a number of properties. We're grandfathered in, so to speak, on some of these things. We have certain flexibilities. So I really tried to look at the sign code as, you know, what it should be from, you know, my years of experience. So one of the items was how to handle the two-story, multi-tenant buildings. For example, we own the Normadale Center on 84th and Normadale, the one with Jimmy John's and Pancharos, and that's been rezoned to B4. And with that, you're encouraging multi-story redevelopments, which could be retail on the first level and then service or office on the second level. And I've put together, I'm not sure if we can do a ceiling thing or anymore.
Could we get the overhead camera, please? There we go. If you just lay it right on the, right in them, it'll move the, yeah, there you go. Perfect.
There you go. Should I turn around, or is that right?
No, it's perfect. Right where it is.
Okay. The first part of this table is what is, is on page 350 of your packet. But basically what you do is you have, under the current code, if you say you have a 100-foot store, or, oh, excuse me, back up a little bit. If you have a two-story or a larger building, we use a 25-foot example. So if it's two-story, they go, the maximum height was 225 feet in height. You could have, you would have 50% less signage than in the current code. But to compound that, if you have a two-story building with, say, retail on the bottom and office above, you would need proper signage for both businesses, and there's no extra factor for that. Your 125 linear feet would be cut in half, as you had to share it with the unit above you. So as a quick example, if you have a 20-foot Jimmy John's, they get 25 square feet of signage. But under this new code, if you had an office building or service above it with the same 20 square feet, they have to share that 25 square feet. So there's just a little inequity in how that square footage would be handled. So it's something that we want them to look at. The simpler solution that I had to this, as Bill had mentioned, to try and come up with solutions, was if you have a two-story or 25-foot building, go to a 2.0. So it doesn't quite double it, but it fixes more the inequity. From, instead of a 50% difference, you're now down to a 20% difference. So I would like to thank you for your consideration on that matter. If you have any questions, feel free to reach, reach out.
Thank you, Mr. Vingi. Mr. Griffith, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We're splitting our presentation, because Mr. Vingi was cut off at the planning commission with three minutes. So we're going to try and double shot clock you here. But thank you. As the Highland people, the Highland supporters, right?
Exactly.
Bill Griffith, happy to be here with you again this evening. Just quickly, and this is a pretty small item, but I think it's an important item. I know it's an important item to retailers, and that's the temporary sign provisions. As we said in the letter, we'd like to request for tenants, 20 shopping centers that have 20 or more tenants, instead of 120 days, that the, you move to 210 days. In our letter, we actually asked for 240, but in the spirit of compromise, working with staff, we're requesting only 30 more days for the larger buildings, and it would be up to 210 days total. Now, if you think about the typical tenant, they might be advertising that they're coming to Bloomington. They might be advertising a seasonal sale, like Halloween at, at the party store. And so if you have two tenants occupying 60 days, you basically have maxed out the 120 days. Now, there can be some overlap. Your staff can explain that to you. But essentially, what we're asking for is 30 more days, 30 more days of temporary signage. And the rationale for limiting temporary signage is visual clutter. And we understand that. But if you think about most of the, the signs that you see, they're using national brands. They're using brand standards, if not national, local brand standards, on signs that are really intended to go for much longer than 30, 60, or 90 days. So really, in terms of visual clutter, we think that allowing 30 more days of signage for those larger shopping centers that have 20 or more tenants, that would include both Valley West and South Town, it's a modest request in the spirit of compromise. That's really all I have to say. I would also ask you to support those alternatives that staff brought forward this evening. Those are reasonable alternatives. We've worked through that. We've worked through examples. They're very sound. I think they are in the spirit of a business-friendly ordinance, and we thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Appreciate it. Good evening. Welcome.
Hey, Mayor Bussie, councilmembers. My name is Mark Stevens, and I'm the real estate manager at Outfront Media here in the Twin Cities. We're a national out-of-home advertising firm, and we have two offices here in the Twin Cities. And we have about 230 billboards total. 30 of those are digital. So we have about 20% market share in this community. And I do, like Matt, have to applaud the city for trying to make the, the sign ordinance easier to understand, because across the board, it's a zigzag mess of days reviewing that. But I guess what, the way that our company looks at it right now, Clear Channel owns and maintains the, the four billboards currently in the city of Bloomington. We've had a pleasure over the past couple of years with the city and the Minnesota, or the, the World Expo Committee, building some bridges as the brand and media sponsor in that bid effort. And unfortunately, we, we all came up short. But we, we would like to be able to do business in Bloomington. And right now, due to the ordinance, there's basically a moratorium on any new billboards, let alone converting the existing old static billboards to digital. You know, if you look at the size of your city and the amount of major thoroughfares and interstates, you know, the whole goal of the out-of-home advertising industry is for that advertisement to be seen by people on the highway. So like Matt said, you know, we, we don't like to be around neighborhoods, or hotels, or what have you, because we angle, and we can, due to the modern technology, we can adjust light. We can do the Amber Alerts and everything that Matt said. And for instance, last year, we put up a, a brand-new digital billboard in Plymouth on 169. And about two weeks after, we got a call from the city, the city manager, he said, hey, we got a complaint, and I have to act on it. And I called him back right away. He was first surprised that I called him back right away. But we talked to our Spokane, our, our group in Spokane that, that controls it via computer. I said, hey, we got to shut, we got to, we got to turn this down. We got to figure it out. We got a knit gun, which you point, you shoot, you measure the light. So the, the technology and the- point, you shoot, you measure the light. So the technology and the ability for companies like mine and Matt's, you know, not a lot of people like us, let's be honest. A lot of people don't like billboards. But they do serve a purpose. They are a very affordable way to have mainly small businesses within your community be able to advertise. It's a lot cheaper than TV, or radio, or even print. And with the PR session that was discussed earlier, I mean, the one thing that should be on there, I mean, they're talking about 300 likes or 3,000 likes. Do you know how many cars drive 494 and 35W every day that see that message? And the out-of-home, I mean, it's a great media, medium for advertising. So I would just ask that, here we're late in the session, that you consider doing a strategic and smart expansion. And the one thing that our company would do is, first of all, first and foremost, we would look for city-owned land. City-owned land that abuts a major thoroughfare. That's not by residential, because then you would be our lessor. We would sign a lease with you. There would be financial, direct financial benefit to the city of Bloomington, as well as the free advertising that you would, you would receive as well. So we really do look into this as a partnership and a way to do smart partnership that doesn't aggravate your constituents, but actually does a service to the city.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Others wishing to speak on this? Mr. Sable, do we have anyone on the phone tonight?
Mr. Mayor and council members, no one on the phone.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? Counsel, no one on the phone, no one coming forward in the chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2 this evening.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mua.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing on item 4.2. So counsel, a couple of things to consider. The staff-supported options that were brought forward, that were talked about, and Nick did a fine job with that. And I will say, Mr. Johnson, you know your stuff when it comes to signs. My goodness, I'm impressed with that, that you were able to answer those questions without notes. I'm impressed by that. Well done. Thank you. So questions on that? And then I would like to address a couple of the questions that were brought forward, and any questions that the council might have about possible changes. I think we've heard about the digital conversion, the possibility of dwell times, the additional billboards, the two-story buildings, and then the temporary sign provisions. So what I would like to do is maybe get the things under our belt here that we can definitely agree on, and perhaps the staff recommendations regarding... Mr. Johnson, maybe you can help me here again with the, with the slides? Because I, the requests, I did as well as I could to catch up with the, or to keep up with the requests, F, G, and H, and others.
Here you are, Mayor. There's F, and I can go through G and H if need be.
Very good. So this was request F, the max individual sign size. The changes you can see in the, in the yellow. And staff is supporting option 2, that apply the restrictions only when in proximity to residential uses. Discussions on this, or concerns, comments? Councilmember DeLisandro?
I just have one question, which is, I don't, I guess I can't visualize what like 1.25 square feet per linear foot of a building is. So it's kind of hard for me to know. But we're basically saying they could make a very big sign, and it wouldn't matter. Because unless it's within 250 feet of a dwelling or designated residential property, there's no limit to the size of the sign.
Mr. Johnson, is that a correct statement?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, so just identifying, well, I'm kind of getting a little ahead of myself. Keep in mind that these maximum individual caps are also tied to this 1.25.
The overall building thing, right?
And so that's creating a bucket of total square footage that a building can draw from, and they can choose to deploy that in 10 signs. They can do two signs, they can do one sign. But what this is proposing to do is when you have a larger building, I don't want to pick on one individual property that I showed a slide of. But it would preclude that outcome from happening when in close proximity to residential uses, where that scale just may not be appropriate. And so that's the thinking behind it. By the way, just with respect to, also a little bit to Kraus Anderson's calculations about kind of how much signage allowance the existing code has versus the new code, I do want to point out that the old code does have higher signage allowances. The fact is that staff's experience, on a frequent basis, it's anecdotal, but frequently, is that a lot of properties leave a lot of square footage on the table when it comes to their sign area, because it just doesn't fit from a scale perspective. By using wall area elevations and percentages, you can have a very, you can have a situation on Penn Avenue that occurs. And so where to set the dial, the square footage per lineal foot of the tenant or the building frontage, the 1.25 represents, we had a very large spreadsheet that we created of lots of different sign permits all over town. And basically, we had different multiplication factors. We had one, we had 1.25, we had 1.4, we had 1.5. And what we were trying to achieve is an equilibrium or a sweet spot of, based on the Planning Commission and City Council Guidance, when we were doing that polling activity, if you recall, there was a question that said, is the existing signs in Bloomington too small, just right, or too big? Which is not overly scientific approach to that exercise. But the response to that uniformly was that we think the sign areas are just right. And so utilizing this 1.25 by a num, by a very large bulk number of signs that we reviewed, and when 90, over 90% of those signs were, were acceptable under this 1.25, or in cases of mixed-use areas, actually the 1.0 even, that's what led us to believe that we were on the right track. But I'll just circle back to my comment one last time about getting the right structure in place. If this is found to be non-functional, one year from now, it's very simple to dial up 1.25 to 1.4, or 1.5, depending on where we think it's appropriate. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Send help. Councilmember DeLisandro? So on request F, this max individual sign size, are we okay with this?
Option 2.
With option 2, yes. Has staff supported option 2? Everybody good with that? Very good. Moving on to option, or request G, once again, the staff support is for option 2. And that, as opposed to the no changes, it makes the changes for Class 5, the, and the changes listed there about the size and the redlined version there, you can see. Any questions on that? I'm hearing no questions. And so can I assume agreement? Let's assume agreement to move on to option H, or request H. Once again, option 1 is no change. Option 2, the staff supported some changes. And you can see the changes there listed regarding maximum areas per sign for Class 3 and Class 5. And then the strikeout on the table notes, as it relates to signs oriented toward 35W, 494, or Trunk Highway 77. Everybody cool with that as well?
And Mayor, I would note that that same language is reflected in the pylon sign table as well.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. All right. Now, on the other requests that you had, the A through everything else that was on there, we didn't get into those, but those are, those were, the Planning Commission was in agreement, or the, and the changes were not necessarily significant? Is that, am I correct in saying that?
Mayor, that's correct phrasing. So the, other than the items that we presented to you, these three requests, if you adopt the remain, the bulk of the ordinance, otherwise, it would just be following the Planning Commission recommendation. If you want, I have extra slides on what those other issues are. If you want to key in on specific ones, we can do that. Or if it's easier, I can go through them. I'll follow your direction.
Counsel, thoughts?
Can we see the list?
Can we see the list again, please?
Oops. Forgive me.
There we go. Councilmember Carter, yep.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be interested in talking more about the billboards. So B, C.
Request B, the billboard digital conversion. I think I would be in favor of talking about that as well.
Yep.
So, council member?
So I would be, actually, I disagree with the Planning Commission, and I would be supportive of moving forward with allowing the four legally nonconforming billboard signs to be, to make the digital conversion. I would go with the staff recommendation on dwell time. But I, I feel like, for those that already exist in our, our community, why not let them upgrade? Especially, I think that the points made around, even the opportunities for the city to be able to share more information on those, because there'd be more opportunity, I think, is compelling. Now, like, removing the moratorium, I wouldn't say I would, I would not be comfortable doing that tonight. I think there would just need to be a lot more community engagement and Planning Commission discussions and all of that. But specific to the conversion, I'm supportive of that.
Council, additional thoughts on this? Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, I think Councilmember Carter is spot on with what she's saying with that. I think we've got a, you know, if we say we want to, you know, kind of work with businesses and small businesses, you know, we talk about our, our, our small business investment that we've made with our fire station. I think that's in keeping with that, is having these discussions. And that could also potentially be another revenue stream as well. So I think it's worth having a discussion. Not sure I want to do that policymaking right here at the dais, but I totally agree that we ought to look at it.
And I guess I would be in favor also of the digital conversion possibilities. For the four that we have existing in our community, I think it makes sense. They've got a long track record of success. I don't think we have seen additional issues in other communities that are similar to Bloomington, or even adjacent to Bloomington. So I'm fine with, I would be fine with the digital conversion permitted language that was struck by the Planning Commission to be reinserted into, into the amendments here. And I'm going to trust Mr. Tasky to keep track of all this, and then as we make the motion, to make sure that we've got everything straightened away, if you could. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. I'm fine with that modernization. And I don't, I don't know if we have on the work plan, I don't remember seeing it, any study on billboard expansion. I thought, feel like we had the discussion around expo time, and then we tabled it, I think. But do we have it in the work plan right now to have a study of if we did expand billboards in the city, what that would look like or anything? Do we have that on the plan?
I'm seeing Mr. Markergaard shake his head.
Saying no or yes?
No, we do not.
Okay.
We do not.
All right. Might be worth considering if we thought that that was something we wanted to do this year. But if not, maybe bring it back for next year, I guess. Because I think, generally speaking, I, I agree that there's probably room for a few more. But I wouldn't want to say that without knowing, number one, where we thought the placement would be best, where we thought the size would be best, and then making sure that we talk to people around that area to get that community engagement, so.
But let's make sure, I appreciate your comments. Let's make sure we got our bites in order here. So the notion of digital conversion, the four that we have.
I'm fine with it.
Everybody, is everybody cool with the digital conversion, the updating of the existing billboards to digital billboards? Are we okay with that? Because the Planning Commission recommended against that, so we'd be going against the Planning Commission recommendation here. But we're, we're good with that. Very good. To your question, Councilmember DeLisandro, about the, the study for additional billboards, it's not on the, it's not on the Planning Commission. Agree, I don't want to do that here and now, because frankly, that's a can of worms. We do not want to open up late on a Monday night without all kinds of work ahead of this. So it might be something we could commit to at least talking about or looking into in the future. But tonight, I don't think would be the time or the place to make that decision right now about whether or not we want to add billboards in the city.
No, I was just recommending a study. So, yeah, absolutely.
Understood. I just wanted to clarify that. The other question regarding dwell times. So the eight seconds for, what is it for? Eight seconds for 10 words or less, is that it? And then 10 minutes for a digital image and more than 10 words? Is that correct?
Mayor, that's correct for standard electronic signs. But I'd note that billboards have a just flat 10-minute dwell time standard. So it's actually two separate and distinct
Two separate and distinct, okay.
Standards current, as it's currently constructed.
Now, I will just throw out, regarding dwell times, I've driven enough, I've been to enough different cities that have had dwell times much less than 10 minutes. There is not bloodshed everywhere, once, you know, by having these shorter dwell times. Personally, this is me talking, I would be okay with shortening those dwell times. I mean, I, to see some, I mean, you go to some cities and you actually see live video and changing every, you know, by the minute. And, and again, I think it works there, and I don't think it causes significant traffic problems. I don't think there, it's a safety issue. I would, I would be open to reducing the dwell times, both for the, the digital signage and for the, the billboards that we just kind of talked about, the updated billboards. Thoughts on that? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be supportive of that. If I recall, there was a study done, a national study on dwell times and safety. And I think it was much less than 10 minutes. So, I mean, I would be, I would be supportive of that.
Mr. Verbrugge, you had your mic on for a half second.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say that the standards vary. You've seen that in the, in the materials from city to city. But, you know, very nearby, at the Metropolitan Airports Commission, we have an example of, of one entity that has an eight-second standard. And that just happens to share a border with us, right? And so, to the mayor's point, I don't know that we see a lot of mayhem on the roads as a result.
Councilmember DeLisandro, thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Councilmember DeLisandro?
I agree completely. If we wanted to, like, trim it down, you know, maybe we make it 20 seconds as opposed to eight, or something like that, I think that that would be reasonable. You know, I think, if, I don't think it's going to be a safety, I mean, unless you're on the strip in Vegas, it's not a stand, it's not a hazard. If you're on the strip in Vegas, there's already a hazard. So you, you know, what's another sign, right?
But that was the example I was thinking, to see how quickly and how dramatically those change.
Yes, absolutely. Well, yeah, never mind the neon and, and, yeah, everything else. So, yeah, I think it'd be great for us to reduce that, you know, maybe it's eight seconds for 10 words or less, and 20 seconds for full signage or whatever. But that would be a good compromise, I feel like. Then we would, we would have a year to figure it out. If we got, we heard from people that it wasn't good, we could always extend it. I'd rather err on the side of maximizing the revenue opportunity for the businesses, giving the, our small businesses the chance to be on there. You know, that's, if it's a 20-second thing, that's like, what, every two minutes, six people get eyes on that? Like, you know, six, you know, businesses can be seen. Like, that seems like a good thing. I'm throwing that out for plus or minus, whatever. But, you know, that's a, that's a much bigger opportunity for our small business owners than if we're talking 10 minutes.
Agreed. Councilmember Loman?
You know, certainly, it sounds, it looks like there's a majority up here. Only thing I would request is if we could vote on that separately as an amendment, so I can vote against that. And then we can move right on along with the rest of it. So I don't want to slow this down. Sounds like we've got consensus here.
All right. We're okay with dwell times? And if we put it at, Councilmember DeLisandro's suggested 20-second, everybody okay with that? Okay to vote on that, I think? So, Mr. Tasky, I'm going to trust you, as we're going to figure all this out, that we'll vote on that one separately. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, I just, for, and again, for the legislative record, and maybe to help Kevin out, too. But I do want to be clear that there's two separate standards that we're considering. And I want to be clear that what you're talking about is aligning both, the, have the same dwell times for billboards and electronic signs.
I believe that's the intent of what we're talking about here, yes. Yes. Yep. All right. Then the two other issues that Mr. Vingi brought up, the, the shared square footage for two-story buildings, and actually, I'm sorry, the, Mr. Griffith brought up the temporary sign provisions, adding the, the 30 days to move it to 200 in total, 210 days total for, for centers with more than 20 tenants. Thoughts on that? Councilmember Loman?
Well, I guess my understanding, I'm trying to understand is, what is a temporary sign? We're getting into 210 days. I mean, why not just make it 365 days? I mean, I don't, I mean, I just, I don't. Help me understand why 210, you know, as opposed to the 240 that they asked for originally, you know, I don't see that clutter now. Help me understand what that means.
Mr. Johnson, in all of your slides of signs around town, do you have one?
So I don't have a slide of, Mayor, thank you. I don't have a slide in, Councilmember Loman, I don't have a slide for temporary sign sizes, but maybe a little context is helpful. So our current sign code only has two standards, 60 days for an individual tenant site, and 120 days for a multi-tenant site. That's it. There's no nuance between how many tenants are associated with that. That's it. There's no nuance between how many tenants are associated with that. We viewed that as a discrepancy or a problem because obviously a site the size that Kraus manages versus a five-tenant building has distinctly different, uh, needs. So what we did is we created a table wherein, uh, the amount of days, uh, would increase for larger tenant sites. Kraus brought this information to us before. Uh, we were in agreement that the largest, uh, properties like a South Town should have, uh, more days to have temporary signage. And to Mr. Griffith's point, yes, you can have overlapping days because you have two separate businesses who are having temporary signage on the same day. That does not double ding you on the number of days that you're, you have there. So what the planning commission, what staff recommended at the planning commission meeting and what planning commission ultimately adopted is the language on your slide. Is that they created a new high, the highest tenant category where they expanded, uh, from 120 days all the way up to 180 days, which of course is half the year. One of the reasons that staff is more in a wait-and-see mode posture and did not support this request while working with them is that the current standard in the community is 120 days. And we're not getting a lot of feedback that that has presented a problem, even at larger tenant sites. Now, the owners, you know, might have a different perspective about that and they're certainly advocating for their interests and I respect that. But this has just not been an issue that is raised as a red flag or a siren, uh, blaring for us throughout this process. And so, uh, from my perspective, planning commission expanded, uh, what was previously proposed and it goes above and beyond what the standard is today, and the standard today doesn't seem to be broken.
So, and this is just in their own private property, right, that they're having these signage, right?
Correct. So, yeah, this, this would be like your temporary, uh, could be a temporary freestanding sign. Sometimes you see like the kind of a wooden, uh, sign up, you know, this development is starting, or you'll see grand opening banners, uh, on a.
So I guess, you know, with that being said, just to kind of cut, cut to the chase, you know, um, I think the market just bears out what's going to happen with that. So, in my own opinion, 365 days, that didn't matter to me. Let's let it, we've got, we can come back in a year and we can have a look at it. Uh, if they're asking for 240, let's give them 240. I mean, I'd, I'd be curious to see, you know, I don't think they're going to use all the way up to that, that 240. But, uh, I'd be open to, um, I know they asked for 210 now, but in their, in their original thing, they said 240. Uh, let's see what 240 looks like, um, and see what it looks like.
Others? Uh, Mr. Councilmember Rebus?
I, I, I would agree with, uh, the 210. Obviously, the whole program has been to benefit the small businesses or businesses in general. So if they are asking for 210, I think it would be a good idea to try that. And since you have a schedule, uh, uh, on the study, a year from the spring, right, March, April, then you could, perhaps you could make some changes or adjustments to, to that. But if they're requesting 210 and the whole idea to create new signage is to benefit the businesses, so why not do that?
So, and to be clear, I think what, uh, Mr. Griffith said specifically was, uh, 20 tenants and 210 days. So there'd be, there would be two changes here. There would be the building, the number of building tenants. Right now, we have it, uh, you know, 16 to 29, and then 30 or more would have the, the largest amount. Mr. Griffith was suggesting 20 tenants, so to revise, to revise the table slightly in that manner as well. Councilmember DeLisandro?
The risk of sounding flippant, I don't mean to, I don't understand why we care about like, you know, why don't we just say like, no one tenant can have a sign for more than 60 days or whatever? And if, if there's that much rotation in a mall where every 60 days, there's a new tenant in there with a temporary sign, they have bigger problems than our sign ordinance. Like, and so I, I don't know why we would care about like the total number of days that any, any one sign can stay out there. If, if, if we're saying, you know, let's say, let me just give you an example in, in South Town, right? March, March through, you know, May, it's tenant number one, and then June through, uh, you know, August. Imagine in the pandemic when you couldn't get a sign for a year and a half, like how that would have conflicted, right? I, I just, I don't think that the total sign thing makes a whole lot of sense to me because it, we already have the, no one individual place can have a sign, a temporary sign for more than X period of days, which seems to me to solve the actual problem. Um, so I, I, I guess give them as many as you want, I guess is where I'm at. But I would be fine with us not worrying about total number of days any building can have signage, I guess. I don't know.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sorry. Like I said, I didn't mean to sound flippant.
No, you, it didn't sound flippant, then. Good sense. That made good sense. Uh, other thoughts? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just want to say that I agree with Councilmember DeLisandro to just do it per tenant.
So then, uh, restate it for me and let, let's see if we have a fourth jump on here.
Sure. What I was proposing that we would just, the maximum duration would be limited to no individual tenant exceeding 60 days per calendar year. But we wouldn't have a maximum duration on the, on the whole structure.
Got it.
Yeah. So, so you limit, you limit the, the amount of time any one tenant can have a temporary sign to 60 days. But you don't worry about whether or not.
Got it.
Oh, you know.
Understand what you're saying.
Somebody's temporary sign is up there.
So all the language about per calendar year, but it just basically.
Correct.
No individual ten, tenant exceeding 60 days.
Correct.
Per year calendar.
That's, that to me makes a lot more sense just because I think it's self-limiting is my point. Right? If you have five, if you have five places or six places and every 60 days, there's a new temporary sign because they're going out of business or they're changing hands, there's a bigger problem there that needs to be solved by the folks that own that building. And I don't think that the sign is going to be the thing they think about.
Mr. Johnson, does this blow things apart?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Of course.
Uh, no, three quick points, if I may. Sorry for my, sorry for my flippant, uh, response. Um, three quick points. One is, uh, I think there's less concern about banners above a tenant space. I think with respect to managing visual clutter, there's greater concern about temporary freestanding signs that litter along the public right-of-way. And so part of the reason is there's a limitation on days is to not just have a never-ending cavalcade of these kind of temporary wooden, uh, signs that go up along the public right-of-way. That's the greatest concern with respect to temporary signage, if I may make that point. Um, the second point was, one of the reasons that cities, uh, do provide limitations on temporary signage is that they're actually trying to encourage the installation and construction of permanent signage. Um, so that's another, uh, factor to consider. And then thirdly, um, uh, just from the standpoint of clean legislative record and legislating from the dais, I think it's going to be more difficult to kind of capture some of these changes on the fly than, um, than maybe making just tweaks within the table, which I think is easier. I certainly think we can try. I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'd like to get this done tonight, certainly. But, you know, I think at some point, there's probably, we just want to make sure we capture the right language.
Mr. Tasky?
Yeah, Mayor and members, if I might, if I could just clarify, so looking at the table that's on the screen, we'll eliminate the left column, so number of building tenants won't matter. Maximum duration on the right will change to just say 60 days per calendar year. Am I on the right track there?
I think 60 days per calendar year per tenant.
Yes.
Yep.
I think we're good, Nick?
Um, and then, so there, there's no differ, uh, just one last point about that, Kevin. Uh, there is additional freestanding signs allowed at larger multi-tenant sites than single-tenant sites, but maybe that resolves itself. I don't know. I guess.
We, Mr. Mayor, we didn't talk about the freestanding signs. I, I, I would, I admit that my flippancy was dedicated to our temporary bill, you know, banner signs and things like that. You know, maybe not for now, but if we thought that the right thing to do would be to kind of delineate, delineate between freestanding signs and signs on buildings, maybe we'd solve that problem in the future, in the future. So if we want to reconstruct this to maybe provide some, some, um, just, uh, like, to make sure that there's a clear delineation between what we think is right for freestanding signs that are problematic and what we think are right for building signs, which are not so problematic, maybe we do that at some future date. But, you know, so in the interest of compromise, we can go back to the 240 days for now and, and go from there. But I think this might be, you know, I don't know, I just, maybe we do something different in the future as it comes back.
What, and I think you, uh, thank you, councilmember, and I think you're getting close to, I'm, I'm coming back around.
Yep.
Uh, if we're looking at this again in a year. Um, and we're, if we're, if we're tinkering, it's one thing, but to redraw the whole table here on the fly, I'm, I'm not necessarily comfortable with. And, um, so I, I, I'm going to throw this out as a, as a, uh, as just as a possible compromise. Based on what we've heard, uh, the, the change that I would suggest under maximum duration for 30 or more, where it says 180 days, just to move that up to 210. Make that change. Leave that and then continue this conversation in November of 2025. And, uh, see where we are then and, and see if, if you are correct, whoever made the point about the, the market basically shaking this out. And I think that might be the case as well. So everybody cool with that?
Maybe, maybe we could give them 180 days on the 16 to 29 as well. And just because that feels like it might accommodate all that properties that might be of concern.
I'll support that.
I would be, I would be fine with that. So the two changes, uh, that we're proposing here under maximum duration for 16 to 29, it will move up to 180. 80 days? And for 30 or more, it will move up to 210 days. Nick, again, does that blow the doors off here? Are we okay?
No, I think that's, that is from a legislative record perspective, and I see Kevin nodding that that's much, that makes a lot more sense to us.
Okay. And then the final thing that we, uh, we haven't talked about, this notion of the, the two-story buildings and the squared, the shared square footage. Of all the requests we heard, I don't, that was the least compelling to me in terms of things we might want to tinker with, but I, I can be swayed here. Thoughts?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I couldn't visualize that one. I mean, mostly I felt like I, I understood what happened there and I thought the, the equity thing was fine in terms of more people get their own place. But then I got this vision of like the signs just running together because they, you know, in some of these buildings, they're small footprints, right? If I think about like Penn American, for example, and the footprints there, especially for like, you know, Hyderabad and then, you know, the ramen place and all that, they're small footprints. And, you know, I don't know how, how changing this to 2.0 per square foot would, uh, like, adjust accordingly. So it was hard for me to visualize and I, so, I mean, I guess I could be fine with it, but I don't know because I can't really visualize it. Thanks.
Other thoughts on this? Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, if I may, briefly, just on this particular topic, this is an area where we actually, uh, we believe that a legitimate concern is being raised with it, but where we, uh, we don't agree with the solution yet.
Okay.
We need to study it more and the reason being, there's only one of these, uh, properties that we know of that has the second-story office and retail. Uh, so it's really, it's not an issue that affects a lot of properties first and foremost. But we think it's a really good fit, uh, for studying it, uh, and bringing some, uh, potential solutions if it does present a problem, uh, further down the road. And the reason being is that if you were to assign additional building sign area to every tenant on every floor, I mean, think of how many office, uh, buildings have that same issue. So we think it's more of a retail, uh, oriented use problem. But as, uh, given the complexity and not wanting to legislate from the dais, this is one where we would request to study it some more and come back with something to look at it.
And frankly, I would be comfortable with that. Others? Councilmember Loman?
So I guess what my question would be, what would be the timeframe on that? Would that be after this year's study or would that somehow you'd come back in, you know, three months and bring it back? So I, I sort of want to look at all this stuff at one time. I mean, and obviously, you know, the solution here is not what we want, but, you know, what, what's the timing on that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, uh, if we come back in a year's time, so it'd be, and if it was, the code was adopted tonight, we would report back on the issue in, uh, no later than March of 2025.
So basically, we'd be waiting a year before we would have a, a recommendation, uh, for this change, is what we're saying here.
That's correct. And with the limited number of properties.
Yeah, for, for one property.
That impacts, I, I think we'll be safe and okay in that regard. And one thing we're not talking about is the Conference of Sign Plan, which allows you to reallocate distributions of signage amongst tenants, um, in these retail situations. Um, so that's part of that conversation.
And certainly if that tenant felt strongly about it, they could do a, you know, a privately initiated thing, right? There'd be, uh, possible to do that, yeah. So, okay, no, I'm good with that then.
Okay. All right. Are we clear on that then, council? We're going to hold tight on this, on, on the discussion about the two-story buildings and the shared square footage. We're going to hold tight on that and wait for staff to work on that a bit and, and come to a, uh, some language for us to consider in the future. We're good with that? Did I resolve all of the questions that Felix had? Have we, have we, have we gone through all those different issues? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, we, I think we talked about everything that, uh, was brought up at public hearing, for sure. Plus the ones that were reconciling the, the planning commission. I, I still, I still would really, I, so I'll make a comment here. I, I always appreciate that we do this, but I'm really frustrated by the fact that we can't go back and solve these problems for customer, for individuals and, and people who have complained about them. Largely, largely, as a council member, largely the reason why we ask for these kinds of studies is because people have come to us with problems. And then we don't actually solve the problems because we have this thing called legal nonconformity. And so, uh, if there's a way that we can solve for that, really solve for that, so that we don't have this. I mean, I, I know last meeting, I went through a couple of small nits around fences and all kinds of other things. These are the same kinds of things. They keep happening, right? Where people bring us legitimate concerns, we bring it to council or we bring it to council and we ask for a study and planning commission does an excellent job and brings us all kinds of changes, and none of them apply to the people who actually have the problem now. And it feels to me like that's a disservice, not intentionally so, but it, it leaves a lot on the table. And so I don't know if there's a way to fix that, but I, I struggle with these ideas because on a going-forward basis, we're doing well, but we don't actually solve the problems that brought this to our attention potentially in the first place. And so if there's a way that we can address that somehow, I'd love that. But this obviously is a bigger comment than just, um, this particular.
And, and I, I don't disagree with you, councilmember. Uh, but I also think we, we need to look at this in terms of, a goal that we keep stating is about being business-friendly in Bloomington. And if we would go back to the example that we're thinking of, we're both thinking of, and tell them, swap out your sign and make it smaller and less bright, then we have to consider the cost to, to that individual business. At one time, they were told it was okay. And to go back and say, nope, now we're, we're, we're changing our minds now. It's not okay and it's going to cost you $100,000 to swap out your sign. It just, uh, we, we're, we're working toward the future to try and prevent this type of issue in the future. I just don't know about the, uh, the fairness of doubling back and saying, you know what, that council said 10 years ago when they gave you the okay, we don't agree with that, so now you've got to, you've got to pay for it. So.
And I'm, I, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. You know, I, I think there's an opport, like I mentioned, it's not just the stick, there's the carrot potentially as well, right? And so there's an opportunity for us to provide some kind of incentives and things like that, too. Also, I'm not too concerned that that particular facility is losing money so badly that they can't afford that, but that's another problem. Uh, having said that, um, I, I would just, in, in most of these cases, it ends up, it ends up that people aren't getting the benefit of the new ordinance. And so I, that's what I worry about.
Councilmember Loman and Councilmember, uh, Rebus. Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, save time. Uh, uh, I don't want to do this whole amendment thing, so it's going to take additional time. And I know we've got other things on the thing. Could I just have the minutes reflect that I'm opposed, uh, to the, uh, the change of the dwelling, the dwelling signs with, within this, uh, particular motion? If, if, if the minutes can just be adjusted and have me written down that I'm opposed to that, and then we don't need to do all the amendments and all that kind of stuff when we vote on it. I'll just.
I will, I, I will see if, if we're, we're cool with that. Yep, the, yep, we're good with that. Councilmember Rebus?
I just had a comment to add, uh, to the, if, correct me if I'm wrong, it's 150 feet for, per sign, right? And then you, uh, if it's a two-story building, that would be still 150 feet divided into two signs if that's required, correct? Right? So the, the, the question was that to increase the size of the signs, right? For more visibility, whatever, and only on retail space, not, not, uh, not office space. So, um, I, I mean, it only makes sense, and you agree with me, right? That basically you agree that that is a good question that was brought up to, to make changes on, right? So, I mean, uh, if this is going to be a study and within a year, we're going to get answers to all the questions that have come up today, why don't we approve this? And then look at it, and if it works, it remains, and if it doesn't, we just do away with it. But at least give it a chance for now, like, uh, um, councilmember, the Alessandro mentioned, uh, we find ourselves, uh, you know, just going around in circles, not accomplishing what we set to accomplish. I mean, and, and I understand sometimes we can't accomplish everything that we try to because, uh, you know, life itself. Uh, however, in this case, if we can accommodate in small requests, at least for now, and then study it within a year and at that point, you know, make the formal decision on whether it remains or not. Would that be possible at all at this point?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember, uh, Rebus, thanks for the question. I think, uh, staff is certainly committed to keep, uh, tracking that issue and looking at a way. What we're concerned about is unintended consequences by just doing a flat, uh, either. either 2.0 or just assigning more sign area across the board to every tenant's base on a higher level. Because that could have unintended consequences for very large amounts of signage in multi-tenant, multi-story buildings. And so I think it's just an issue from a regulatory standpoint that has a little bit of complexity to it, that we want to make sure we sharpen it to focus it on the retail situations where it's really needed versus just allowing it as kind of a canvas across the board. And so that's why we're proposing to kind of pause or delay on that so that we can study it a little bit more.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, Council, I think we've got, we've got this, I think teased to death now. And so I think we're, um, and, and I think the, the, the motion we're looking for, if we make the motion and simply say with changes as stated or something along those lines, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members, I, I have a long, Melissa, the city attorney had been preparing this offline.
Sure she has.
She has a long motion that we can share. I don't know if I can get that to you.
If you want to, if you want to jabber that to me, I will.
Okay.
Move, I will push that as the motion and we'll see if we can get this moving. How about that?
Mayor, I'll second it.
Uh, we, we got to get there first. Hold on, we want it in the record. We want to be official with this.
Kevin, I.
All right, Council. I would look for a motion for an ordinance establishing new standards and procedures for signs, thereby amending chapters one, two, 12, 14, 17, 19, 21, and appendix day of the city code to include amendments F option two, G option two, and H option two as presented by staff, and to keep the text prepared by staff in section 21.304.20E and the, and the final clause in 21.304.18B to allow the conversion of the four existing billboards to digital and amending the chart in section 21.304.13C1 to state 180 days at the maximum duration for 16 to 29 tenants and 280 days for 30-plus or 30-plus tenants. And to attend, amend the duration time from 10 minutes to 20 seconds as stated in sections 21.304.20C10A and 21.304.18.
So moved as stated.
Mr. Mayor, council members, if I might, the last, the only amendment was the 280 days for, for the tenants. And that was B 240, I believe. So that was the only, um, error in there.
So I'll move it with that revision.
There you go.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Delisandro for the motion as stated with the exception of 280 days to 240 days. And is everybody clear on that? Is the record clear on that? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, Council. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, and I'm, I'm sorry?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we have summary.
We have summary publication, my bad, my bad.
I think we can abbreviate this one.
Motion, uh, Council, I look for a motion for summary publication.
So moved?
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Delisandro for summary publication. No further council discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero for summary publication. Now, thank you, Council, for the work on that. Thank you, Mr. Toski, for keeping us straight on that. And, uh, Mr. Johnson, outstanding work. Thank you very much. Well done and greatly appreciated. We will move, yes, and thank you all for, uh, the, the members of the public who have worked hard on this. I know it's been a lot, so thank you very much. Well done. We're going to move to our organizational business, item five. And we have two items and our first item under organizational business is item 5.1, an update on the Bloomington Forward Projects. Ann Cattrie, back from Park and Recreation, one more time. Good evening once again and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to try to do better on the clicker this time. I hear it's operator error, not the clicker itself, so we'll see. So first thing I would like to do this evening is introduce the staff that I have here with me. I have staff leads for our three Bloomington Forward projects. Dave Hanson, Lenny Schmitz, Renee Clark, and Leah Hughes. I'll be, um, as talking a little bit about their roles as I get into the presentation. So great news, as you all know, all three projects passed and now the question is now what? And it seems from our perspective like it's been forever since November 7th. But I want to acknowledge all of the work that so many city staff and so many departments have done to get us to the point where we're kicking off these projects. The thing that I want to acknowledge is we're working really hard here to get these projects kicked off. And we acknowledge the fact that inflation can take a bite out of our budgets. And we are trying to get these projects kicked off and going as quickly as we possibly can, doing all three projects concurrently to try to limit the amount of time and money that inflation takes out of our budget. So as I've been saying to staff teams, we are not gluttons for punishment to try to do this all at the same time, but we really are trying to be as respectful to, to the taxpayer and, and the money that we will be receiving from the Bloomington sales tax. So tonight I will not be going into really great detail about each of the individual projects, but I want to let you know a status update about each project. My staff leads can answer any questions that you might have, but we will be coming back to you and reporting specifically on the individual projects as we move forward. So first of all, just a quick reminder, Bloomington Forward is a $155 million investment to build a new community health and wellness center, to renovate the Bloomington Ice Garden, and to enhance and protect the Nine Mile Creek Corridor. So as you recall, the state legislature authorized the city to place a half-cent sales tax on the ballot last November 7th. And that sales tax total is for $155 million. And then we received an additional $4 million from the state, from state bonding for pre-design work at the Bloomington Ice Garden and the Community Health and Wellness Center. Just a little bit about the projects themselves. This is the information that we gave to residents last year in order for them to vote favorably for the projects. The one thing I want to say about the Community Health and Wellness Center, and I want to hats off to Diane Kirby and her team here. They have been working on this community center for the past 10 years. A lot of work has been done previously on this. So we are not starting completely from scratch as to what can go into a community health and wellness center. What I've been saying to staff teams is we have a funnel and the funnel is narrowed. So we have a pretty good idea of some of the amenities, but we have a lot of fine tuning that has to happen with these amenities. The project is a $100 million project and we have $1.8 million in state bond funds that are coming to this project as well. The Nine Mile Creek Corridor project is our project that quite honestly is the least developed. The city council last year said, we want a significant natural resource restoration project as one of these sales tax items. And this is the, the project that absolutely came to the forefront for staff as we worked through our park system master planning process. It was really clear to us, both in terms of the natural resource amenities that we had here, but also what a gem this park is to the community in Bloomington. So we're really looking forward on collaborating with the residents and figuring out the best ways that we can invest and protect the natural resources in the Nine Mile Creek region. That's a $20 million project. And the last but not least project is the Bloomington Ice Garden renovation. As you know, we have a significant mechanical issue at the Ice Garden. R22 operates all three of our sheets for refrigeration. R22 can no longer be produced or imported in the United States. So that is a key component to this project is replacing all of the refrigeration systems and a lot of the major mechanicals. But we also have some really exciting opportunities to enhance the user experience at big as well. That is a $35 million project and we have $2.2 million in state bond funds coming to that initiative. So now I want to talk a little bit about the specific project teams that we have put together for each of the individual projects and a little bit about the consultants that we have been working with staff teams to hire to date. The big project is the furthest along. As you know, we started on the initial phases of feasibility for this project last July. We hired JLG and that firm to assist us as an architect. I am the project owner for all three of these projects. They're all obviously parks and recreation projects. I consider myself to be a key facilitator, organizer, pusher, puller, getting folks together in the right direction for all three of these projects. Deb Williams from our Public Works and Facilities Division is our project manager for this project. Staff leads are Lenny and Leah. Our communication lead for the project is Eric Jewell. And we have recently hired RJM to be our construction manager for the project. I want to note that this project is slightly different from the other two in that we are using significant stakeholder engagement on the project as opposed to a significant community engagement initiative. We are really relying on our stakeholders, those, those folks that are using our facilities on a regular basis to provide feedback as to what is needed at that facility. I'm going to take this opportunity though, Janine Hill earlier in this meeting really teed up the conversation talking about the communications and engagement plans that we have collaborated with our communications and co-ed teams. That was a significant initiative that we did in collaboration with the Parks and Recreation Department in the month of January. Staff leads were assigned for communications and community outreach and engagement. And those teams worked with our Parks and Recreation staff leads on the projects to develop communications and community outreach and, and educate, and engagement plans for all three of the projects. You have received those previously in the Bloomington this week, a couple of weeks ago. So that was a really great collaborative effort. And something that is going to get communications and community outreach and engagement started from the very beginning of these projects. In terms of the timeline for the big renovation, we're working on our first big bid package for that project. We have a lot of long lead time equipment that needs to be ordered. And we hope to have those items ordered by the end of the first quarter. By the third quarter of this year, construction could start. We need to make room in the facility to house the new refrigeration equipment when it comes in. So there's a chance that we could start seeing some construction at big this fall, but it won't impact the utilization of the facility. We're still planning on a full facility shutdown from March until the fall of 2025. In terms of the Community Health and Wellness Center team, we have hired an owners rep for the city called Tegra that is going to serve as our project manager for the project. Staff leads are me and Leah Hughes. Ashley from Communications is our lead. Emily from CoEd is the lead for, for outreach and engagement. And we have hired Prose Consulting to be our consultant to work on a feasibility study. I'll talk a little bit about that in the next slides. And the selection of the architect and engineer and construction manager. We currently have an RFP out and issued for our architect and engineers. We have significant interest that has been expressed in this project. We have over 45 firms that have reached out and attended a, a pre-bid meeting last week. We expect to have an award of a contract for architect and engineer for the city council on April 15th. We'll be following up very shortly after that with the hiring of a construction manager and hope to have them ready to award on the July 1st city council meeting. I mentioned the feasibility study. This is something that the council is going to be participating in very soon. We've hired Prose Consulting. That work will be done between February and July of 2024. And I have listed here some of the different things that, that the feasibility study is going to be doing. As I mentioned earlier, work on this community center has happened for the last eight to 10 years. But we had a pandemic and it's been since 2019 since we really had significant community engagement. So we want to kick off kind of right-size, figure out where we are before we start the engagement. And that's what we're going to use as the basis for the start of the community engagement. One of the key stakeholders, obviously, in, in this process is going to be the city council, the park commission, some staff leads and some folks at Creekside. We are starting our kickoff conversation with our consultant on this project on March 18th, actually. And the, the plan is to transition the information that we receive from this part of the study into the architect and engineer so we can figure out how much space we need for all of the programs that are identified by residents. In terms of the timeline for the Community Health and Wellness Center, we're looking towards community engagement and design in '24 and '25. We'll finish the engagement and get into significant design and bid in '25. And hopefully we'll be ready for construction in '25 and '26. Maybe a facility opening late '26, hopefully early '27 at the very latest. Again, this is a draft schedule. We don't have any of those consultants on board yet, but we think it's a pretty reasonable timeline. And the Nine Mile Creek Project team, Bob Simons from our engineering division is our project manager. Renee and Dave are our staff leads. Communications lead is Janine Hill, co-ed lead Tracy Smith. And we currently have an, uh, RFP for the architects and engineers in process and we hope to have that advertised in early March. The RFP for construction manager will likely follow later in 2024. In terms of the timeline for the Nine Mile Creek Project, we will plan to start community engagement in May or June of this year, once we get the architect and engineers hired. We'll have significant community engagement that's going to be occurring for two years. And I just want to mention for, for this project as well as the Community Health and Wellness Center, if you think about what you saw in the last two to five years from the park system master planning process and the Bryant and Tretba projects, where we're reporting back to the council in the pre-design 30, 60, 90, and we're engaging the community at every single one of those phases, that's exactly what you can expect to see as part of these projects as well. We'll be engaging people in all forms, just like you've seen on the, on the other projects as well. We're looking forward to kicking off the community engagement on this project. Hopefully we'll be ready to bid this project in early 2026 and look for a '26 and '27 construction timeline. The last thing I wanted to mention this evening is we're really excited to announce that we transitioned our BloomingtonForward.org page from an education page that we used for the campaign last fall for the referendum to now a project page. And I want to encourage everyone to visit BloomingtonForward.org now and frequently because it is a page that's going to be a living, breathing, uh, website for all three of the projects. So if anybody wants to know the status update for any of the projects or how they can become engaged, that is the best way to do it. We have also created, um, an email called Forward@BloomingtonMN.gov. So if anyone has any questions, wants to provide any feedback, that's the only email address that they have to know. They can email there and then that will go directly to one of the staff leads who will reply immediately to that email. Same thing for council. If you get an email from a resident that you want staff to reply to, you can just forward it to that email and I can assure you that we will take care of it. Also encouraging people to sign up for the Parks and Recreation e-subscribe. That way they will get information pushed right into their email box. as far as all three of the projects goes. So it's a really great website. It's very user-friendly, so I encourage everyone to check out that page. And that's all I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions or defer any questions to any of my staff leads as well.
Thank you much. Council questions. Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there was some confusion, I see, Anne. I think there was some confusion over the last couple of weeks as the agendas were published about, you know, the fact that we were requesting funding to hire the architects or whatever. Can you talk a little bit about why those, having those architects and engineers in place prior to the community engagement is important? Because I think that people assumed that we were hiring people to start doing work, and that's not really what they do. So can you articulate that and maybe help some folks understand that a little better?
Absolutely, Councilmember DeLisandro. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember DeLisandro. Thank you for asking that question. Yes, I do understand that there was some confusion with members of the community when they learned that we were issuing an RFP to hire the architects and engineers. I do believe that there was some concern that we were already to construction phase. And what I shared with residents is it's really important from a staff perspective and hopefully from a resident perspective as well that we're bringing these consultants on from the very, very first amount of engagement that we do, because I think it's really important that our consultants hear firsthand from the residents when we're doing this community engagement. So we want to get our architects and engineers hired as soon as we possibly can so we can kick off that engagement. I can assure you, we have not done any design. We have not done any work. We will be kicking off that project this spring.
As a fan of somebody, well, and as somebody who does this for a living, where I sit in front of customers and do product discovery all the time, I can promise you, getting as close as possible to the customer is only for their benefit and for the customer's benefit. So I appreciate your articulating that. That makes a lot of sense to me. Hopefully, folks that are listening, if they have any open questions about that, they can write forward at BloomingtonMN.gov and get more information. But I think it was important for us to make sure people understood that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions, council? So I would ask you and anybody behind you who would want to answer this. What do you envision is going to be the biggest challenge on all of this over the next, how many years we're going to be working toward this?
That's a great question. I'm happy to, I'm happy to start and then leave it to any of my colleagues that might want to answer as well. I feel like the biggest challenge is going to be determining exactly what the residents want to see in a community center. Working with the council on figuring out exactly what the right size and right programming components are going to be, along with the right fees to charge for the facility, looking at cost recovery and how much it's going to cost to operate that facility. And then it's all fitting in on the Creekside site. I feel like that might be, that might be the biggest challenge. But I want to point out with that, because I think this is going to be really important to the council. This is one of the reasons I wanted to start with the feasibility study, looking more detailed at the program and looking at fees, revenue sources, and expenses early on so that we have a starting point for how much it could potentially cost to operate the facility. And then as we get into further design, we make changes. We can continue to update that, so we will always know, at least have a really good idea, how much it's going to cost to operate this facility. So hopefully, we're providing really good, up-to-date information for you all to make decisions.
Thank you for that candid answer. Anybody else want to chime in?
Come on, you got to have something.
Mayor, members of council, I can just add that during these processes, we work really hard to listen to the community and make designs that respond to what we hear. All these projects have a lot of moving pieces, and I think it'll be a challenge to listen, respond, interpret, and really make everybody happy. But it's, I think, a fun challenge and a really lot of opportunity on all three projects. But that's always a challenge to make sure people are, we listen, they're heard, and the designs are responsive.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, I think Renee hit it on the head. At BIG, there's probably $50 million worth of want with our user groups and $37 million worth of budget. I think the other biggest challenge that we're seeing in the last month is we have 383 days we still got to get through, and things are falling apart, falling apart fast. So we're just, the duct tape and the wobble gum is wearing out, so we're very appreciative of the residents to make this investment in the facility. We're just going to do our darndest to get to the finish line in 383 days. Not that we're counting, but yeah.
And the finish line is in the starting line, is what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. Well, thank you all. Appreciate that. Counsel, any additional questions? Well, very good. Well, thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for sticking it out late with us tonight. We appreciate it. Looking forward to regular updates on all of this because I think we and the rest of the community are dying to see this move forward and looking forward to all the details and the updates that are coming forward with all of this. So, thank you. Looking forward to hearing more from you. Our last agenda item tonight, council, is item 5.2, the city council policy and issue update. And I will start a recap of our listening session earlier this evening. We had four people speak. Mike List talked about the ongoing issues with the group home in his neighborhood and some of the issues that surround that. He was looking for details and some updates. We were able to provide some information. Hopefully, we can provide some more. What I did offer is if we could possibly have our Bloomington Police Department stop on by and have just a chat with the neighbors and with the folks in the group home regarding expectations and what it means to be a good neighbor and making every effort we can to try and avoid problems before they start, once the weather warms up. So I hope we can do that. Sally Ness spoke to us again with her concerns about disability parking access at the Darrell Farouk Center. And we had the discussions back and forth that the concerns that she continues to bring up. Chief Hodges has said that the concerns that she is bringing up are not necessarily concerns, and they have been addressed. And so if she has any additional questions, we're going to point her toward Chief Hodges, and they can have the discussion exactly as to how it might work. Mary Slindy spoke to us, and she had three suggestions for the council. She was talking specifically about the need for the council to listen more carefully, to spend more wisely, and to be perceptive of the perception of the council within the community. And finally, Tim Repke was there and spoke about National Invasive Species Week and about the project that is going to be starting that we just heard about in the Nine Mile Creek Corridor, and wanting to make sure that we paid very close attention to the invasive species there. And we had a good discussion then about invasive species across the community as well. I will note that two of the four were first timers. And so once again, our listening session is doing what we wanted it to do, an opportunity to talk to new people in the community and have them bring their questions and concerns forward and to have a conversation. And we had good conversations, I think, with everybody who was there this evening. So those were our speakers for the listening session on the 26th of February. I have nothing else. Mr. Verbrugge, anything from you?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Well, yes, I'm sorry, there is something. Kind of an important something. Just as a heads up, we have a council meeting next Monday. I will be traveling and will not be here. Diane Kirby will be the acting city manager. But I mentioned that because it will be, this evening is my last opportunity to thank a couple members of our senior leadership team. Carla Henderson, our community development director, is leaving the city of Bloomington and moving on to a leadership position in a local nonprofit in the housing sector. And Mike Sable is leaving us as he goes to the city of Maplewood to be their next city manager. And so I just want to take this opportunity publicly to acknowledge the work that both of them have done here. It is tremendous work on each of, for each of them in what we've asked them to do and how they have embraced those challenges and made a significant difference in our organization and in the community. And we are going, we are grateful for the work that they have done here, and we are wishing them nothing but the best. So Mike's last day is March 5th, next Tuesday, and Carla's last day will be March 15th. So I want to make sure that we publicly acknowledge and thank them for their service to the city of Bloomington. They've done a tremendous job.
Here, here, and thank you for chiming in. And we'll have the opportunity next week to fetch you even more when we have the opportunity. But thank you for your words, Mr. Verbrugge. Couldn't agree more. Counsel, anything to add tonight? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a part of an organization called Clean Water Action, and one of the things that has come to my attention through that organization is the potential possibility of trying to support the removal of the preemption that's for plastic bags. I guess a number of years back when Minneapolis had made that, made that change, this moratorium kind of came into being and has kind of prevented cities from being able to do that. And so one of the things that they're asking folks to be able to do is to write a letter on behalf, at least having that conversation. I understand that we have some rather large businesses in the community, and making that change would be a huge piece. But one of the reasons why I thought it would be germane to bring this forward is given our situation with the HERC and how that is going to change things, I thought it made good sense for us to at least try to put forward to have that conversation. So I'm kind of asking two things here. One, to see if there is interest at all from this council. One, to support having that conversation from a legislative standpoint. And then, two, they're also asking for us to have the permission to be able to send a letter on behalf. And I would need the, certainly, you know, I don't necessarily need the whole council, but I'd need the permission of this body to be able to do that for myself. So those are the two things that I am asking tonight. And we don't necessarily need to make a decision today, but I wanted to put that forward. I can send, have the city manager send that letter if there's some interest in learning a little bit more about what they're trying to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Lohman. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Lohman did share this with me last week. I shared it with our staff. Councilmember Lohman is correct, it's not part of our legislative platform as currently adopted on the sustainability area. That being said, both Laura Horner and Ellen Bialas were in agreement that the plastic bag preemption bill is something that we would be supportive of because of its, you know, potential to help in the waste reduction area, which is, I think, high on the minds of everybody here. Now, it does not require the prohibition of plastic bags. It's a restore local control, and it repeals the prohibition on cities taking independent action to do that. And so as a matter of local control, which, you know, we tend to believe in here and we advocate for at the legislature, combined with the waste reduction perspective, I would recommend that the council give us the go-ahead to send a letter of support. I don't know that we need to study it much more at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Councilmember Carter?
I would be supportive of that.
I would be supportive as well. I'm always open for the conversation. Whether, where that conversation leads within the city of Bloomington is one thing, but I think there needs to be, that conversation happens, needs to happen at the local level as opposed to in St. Paul with a blanket prohibition for cities to even talk about it, which is, I think, ridiculous. I see a fourth nodding head as well. All right?
All right. I see a general nodding of heads, and everybody's comfortable. We have a consensus here. So I'll work with Councilmember Lohman, and we'll draft a letter. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel, anything else? Nothing else this evening. Very good. I will take note that Councilmember Nelson has dropped off. So as I look for a motion to adjourn, we are not going to need to do the roll call. So how about that? Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mu, second by Councilmember Carter, to adjourn this evening's meeting. No further council discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0. Counsel, thanks much for the discussion tonight. Well done. I think this was a very productive meeting and very, very, well-done meeting. Thank you. Thanks to everybody who tuned in. Thanks to staff for all of your work. Everybody have a good rest of your week. Let's hope it's as nice as today was. So thank you much.